Establishing oversight, transparency for every tax dollar received and spent. Assure funds are being used for education in a responsible manner, not tied up in bureaucracy. Lastly, cultivating success after graduation. In the job market, 35% requires a college degree, while 65% require vocational trade skill. We must ensure that every school develops and maintains well-rounded academic and vocational programs that prepare our youth for college or postgraduate job market. I want our children to be successful in life. Without quality education, they have not a chance in today's global economy. Let's put an experienced and trusted leader in office. Respectfully, I ask for your vote for Lydia Gutierrez on May 19th. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Ramsey.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Ramsey.
Hi, this is Caritero Family.
I've been working with all of you for the last 15 years, solving problems in our neighborhoods.
I've been working with all of you for the last 15 years, solving problems in our neighborhoods.
We are from Los Angeles, for your hearts.
You're watching Channel 35, our city agenda.
That's why I'm running for city council, because of the success that we've had together.
That's why I'm running for city council, because of the success that we've had together.
I moved to Los Angeles as a reporter.
I moved to Los Angeles as a reporter.
That's how I met Tom Labange when he was working for councilmember John Ferraro.
That's how I met Tom Labange when he was working for councilmember John Ferraro.
I was writing about the city of Los Angeles and the challenges of middle-class communities.
I was writing about the city of Los Angeles and the challenges of middle-class communities.
Tom drove me through nearly every neighborhood, talking to people by their first names.
Tom drove me through nearly every neighborhood, talking to people by their first names. It was inspiring to see that level of connection between City Hall and our neighborhoods.
It was inspiring to see that level of connection between City Hall and our neighborhoods.
When my kids were born, I became active locally, and we worked together toward real solutions
When my kids were born, I became active locally, and we worked together toward real solutions
that made on-the-ground improvements to our neighborhoods.
that made on-the-ground improvements to our neighborhoods. Councilmember Labange offered me a job, and I love the work I've been doing ever since.
Councilmember Labange offered me a job, and I love the work I've been doing ever since.
I'm running because I know that we still have problems to solve.
I'm running because I know that we still have problems to solve.
We need to create more jobs to stabilize the economy.
We need to create more jobs to stabilize the economy. We need to continue to protect and enhance our neighborhoods, and we also need to fix
We need to continue to protect and enhance our neighborhoods, and we also need to fix our infrastructure.
our infrastructure.
I have specific plans to do all three, and I'd love the opportunity to work with you
I have specific plans to do all three, and I'd love the opportunity to work with you to make these things happen.
to make these things happen. One, jobs.
One, jobs.
Sergeant, please call the members.
If we can create more jobs, we can stabilize the city's budget and the economy as a whole.
If we can create more jobs, we can stabilize the city's budget and the economy as a whole. I have a specific plan called the Hollywood Innovation Zone for a 20-block area just
I have a specific plan called the Hollywood Innovation Zone for a 20-block area just
Sergeant, please call the members.
north of Melrose, where we can innovate new jobs, new tech jobs and entertainment jobs
north of Melrose, where we can innovate new jobs, new tech jobs and entertainment jobs that will stabilize our economy into the future.
that will stabilize our economy into the future.
Sergeant, please call the members.
Two, we need to protect neighborhoods against overdevelopment, traffic, and crime.
Two, we need to protect neighborhoods against overdevelopment, traffic, and crime.
Sergeant, please call the members.
Three, we've got to fix our infrastructure.
Three, we've got to fix our infrastructure.
Everyone agrees.
Everyone agrees.
We've got to fix our streets and sidewalks, and while we're at it, we've got to fix our
We've got to fix our streets and sidewalks, and while we're at it, we've got to fix our
Sergeant, please call the members.
water infrastructure, too.
water infrastructure, too.
We've got to do it all three things at once so that we don't repave your street and come
We've got to do it all three things at once so that we don't repave your street and come back a year later to tear it up and fix the water pipes underneath.
back a year later to tear it up and fix the water pipes underneath.
Sergeant, please call the members.
If you think these things are too ambitious, consider this.
If you think these things are too ambitious, consider this.
20 years ago, Los Angeles was the murder capital of the United States.
20 years ago, Los Angeles was the murder capital of the United States.
Sergeant, please call the members.
Now, we're the safest big city in America.
Now, we're the safest big city in America.
I want to work with you to make the safest big city in America the most livable city
I want to work with you to make the safest big city in America the most livable city
Sergeant, please call the members.
in America, too.
in America, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Ramsey, and I'd love to have your vote for councilmember in District 4
I'm Carolyn Ramsey, and I'd love to have your vote for councilmember in District 4
Sergeant, please call the members.
on Tuesday, March 3rd.
on Tuesday, March 3rd.
Let's keep working together to make our neighborhoods better.
Let's keep working together to make our neighborhoods better. Thanks.
Thanks.
Sergeant, please call the members.
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 I'm standing here in San Pedro at the Red Car Railroad Station.
I'm standing here in San Pedro at the Red Car Railroad Station. I'm standing here in San Pedro at the Red Car Railroad Station. This is a classic train dating back many, many years, and it's a real tourist attraction This is a classic train dating back many, many years, and it's a real tourist attraction
This is a classic train dating back many, many years, and it's a real tourist attraction
here in San Pedro. here in San Pedro.
here in San Pedro.
So come with me as we find out more about the history of the classic red car.
So come with me as we find out more about the history of the classic red car.
So come with me as we find out more about the history of the classic red car. We're standing by one of the classic red cars in San Pedro, and we're talking to the
We're standing by one of the classic red cars in San Pedro, and we're talking to the
We're standing by one of the classic red cars in San Pedro, and we're talking to the gentleman gentleman behind all this magic, Bob Henry.
gentleman behind all this magic, Bob Henry.
behind all this magic, Bob Henry. Bob, tell us what you... Bob, tell us what you...
Bob, tell us what you...
Well, tell us a little bit about this car, first of all. Well, tell us a little bit about this car, first of all.
Well, tell us a little bit about this car, first of all.
Okay, you're standing in front of Car 500, which is a replica of a Pacific Electric Okay, you're standing in front of Car 500, which is a replica of a Pacific Electric Okay, you're standing in front of Car 500, which is a replica of a Pacific Electric 500 back in the 1920s, 1930s. 500 back in the 1920s, 1930s. 500 back in the 1920s, 1930s. It's one of two of the replicas we have running, 500 and 501. It's one of two of the replicas we have running, 500 and 501. It's one of two of the replicas we have running, 500 and 501. 501 right now is actually out on the tracks. 501 right now is actually out on the tracks. 501 right now is actually out on the tracks. We're now in our maintenance facility with 500. We're now in our maintenance facility with 500. We're now in our maintenance facility with 500.
Originally, LA was a network of red cars and everything. Originally, LA was a network of red cars and everything.
Originally, LA was a network of red cars and everything.
These cars, are they a replica of that? These cars, are they a replica of that?
These cars, are they a replica of that?
Yeah, these are precise replicas. Yeah, these are precise replicas. Yeah, these are precise replicas. What we had, we had examples of the old cars out, the Orange Empire Railway Museum in What we had, we had examples of the old cars out, the Orange Empire Railway Museum in Paris, What we had, we had examples of the old cars out, the Orange Empire Railway Museum in Paris, Paris, California. 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 They have the real cars out there, and we were able to send our maintenance people They have the real cars out there, and we were able to send our maintenance people and They have the real cars out there, and we were able to send our maintenance people and and our constructors out to look at the cars and replicate them exactly. our constructors out to look at the cars and replicate them exactly. our constructors out to look at the cars and replicate them exactly. So when you get on this car, you're actually getting on a car that would be in the 1920s. So when you get on this car, you're actually getting on a car that would be in the 1920s. So when you get on this car, you're actually getting on a car that would be in the 1920s.
When you were rebuilding them, did you have any sort of set of rules, as it were,
When you were rebuilding them, did you have any sort of set of rules, as it were,
When you were rebuilding them, did you have any sort of set of rules, as it were, for the people that actually did the building?
for the people that actually did the building?
for the people that actually did the building?
Well, what we had is, we had people who worked at the port. Well, what we had is, we had people who worked at the port. Well, what we had is, we had people who worked at the port. The craftsmen at the port were actually finished carpenters, and if you get on the cars, you'll The craftsmen at the port were actually finished carpenters, and if you get on the cars, you'll The craftsmen at the port were actually finished carpenters, and if you get on the cars, you'll see magnificent woodwork, and all that woodwork is done by our carpenters, including the boot see magnificent woodwork, and all that woodwork is done by our carpenters, including the boot see magnificent woodwork, and all that woodwork is done by our carpenters, including the boot at the end is all steam-bent wood. at the end is all steam-bent wood. at the end is all steam-bent wood. All the woodwork inside is all mahogany. All the woodwork inside is all mahogany. All the woodwork inside is all mahogany. The seats are all ash. The seats are all ash. The seats are all ash. And we had one person whose only job was to go to the lumberyard and pick out the lumber And we had one person whose only job was to go to the lumberyard and pick out the lumber And we had one person whose only job was to go to the lumberyard and pick out the lumber and match it all. and match it all. and match it all.
What about the people who run this, the driver and the conductor?
What about the people who run this, the driver and the conductor? What about the people who run this, the driver and the conductor? Was it hard or challenged to find the right sort of person? Was it hard or challenged to find the right sort of person?
Was it hard or challenged to find the right sort of person?
Well, that's a contractor, that's Herzog Transit Services, their division of Herzog Well, that's a contractor, that's Herzog Transit Services, their division of Herzog Well, that's a contractor, that's Herzog Transit Services, their division of Herzog Company, and they do this around the country. Company, and they do this around the country. Company, and they do this around the country. They have another lineup in California. They have another lineup in California. They have another lineup in California. This is kind of, call it their toy department here, but they have commuter lines in Texas This is kind of, call it their toy department here, but they have commuter lines in Texas This is kind of, call it their toy department here, but they have commuter lines in Texas and California. and California. and California. There, we have two people on the car, and it could be more economical to run just a There, we have two people on the car, and it could be more economical to run just a There, we have two people on the car, and it could be more economical to run just a driver, which, like, if you go to New Orleans, there's just a driver on the car. driver, which, like, if you go to New Orleans, there's just a driver on the car. driver, which, like, if you go to New Orleans, there's just a driver on the car. I wanted a conductor on there also to interact with the passengers, as you saw today. I wanted a conductor on there also to interact with the passengers, as you saw today. I wanted a conductor on there also to interact with the passengers, as you saw today. That's what they do, is to hand out the conductor caps and greet people on the car to make That's what they do, is to hand out the conductor caps and greet people on the car to make That's what they do, is to hand out the conductor caps and greet people on the car to make it more, not just a transit line, but make it a real tourist line. it more, not just a transit line, but make it a real tourist line. it more, not just a transit line, but make it a real tourist line.
We're talking to a gentleman here who is, has a sort of grime come with uniform on. We're talking to a gentleman here who is, has a sort of grime come with uniform on.
We're talking to a gentleman here who is, has a sort of grime come with uniform on.
That looks to me as if he is one of the workers for these classic cars. That looks to me as if he is one of the workers for these classic cars.
That looks to me as if he is one of the workers for these classic cars.
And I understand his name is Doug Ward. And I understand his name is Doug Ward.
And I understand his name is Doug Ward.
Tell us exactly, Doug, what you do. Tell us exactly, Doug, what you do.
Tell us exactly, Doug, what you do.
I'm the mechanic for this.
I'm the mechanic for this.
I'm the mechanic for this.
I do all the maintenance and keep the cars running.
I do all the maintenance and keep the cars running. I do all the maintenance and keep the cars running.
Did you, as a little boy, have a train set? Did you, as a little boy, have a train set?
Did you, as a little boy, have a train set?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
What kind of train set you have? What kind of train set you have?
What kind of train set you have?
Had a Lionel train set, so had that for a while, and then got into high school, ended
Had a Lionel train set, so had that for a while, and then got into high school, ended Had a Lionel train set, so had that for a while, and then got into high school, ended up in the smaller scale, into the HO trains. up in the smaller scale, into the HO trains.
up in the smaller scale, into the HO trains.
On working on a thing like this, what have you found from a technical point of
On working on a thing like this, what have you found from a technical point of
On working on a thing like this, what have you found from a technical point of view view to be the biggest, you know, mechanical challenge?
view to be the biggest, you know, mechanical challenge?
to be the biggest, you know, mechanical challenge?
Mostly that everything is big.
Mostly that everything is big. Mostly that everything is big.
Is big? Is big?
Is big?
You need a forklift or a crane to work on a lot of it, and the things we seem to
You need a forklift or a crane to work on a lot of it, and the things we seem to
You need a forklift or a crane to work on a lot of it, and the things we seem to have the most problems with are some of the heaviest things. have the most problems with are some of the heaviest things.
have the most problems with are some of the heaviest things.
Tell me briefly, what decided you to come on the train? Tell me briefly, what decided you to come on the train?
Tell me briefly, what decided you to come on the train?
Well, like every two or three months, the kids like to come on down here and ride
Well, like every two or three months, the kids like to come on down here and ride Well, like every two or three months, the kids like to come on down here and ride
the trolley, and we enjoy coming down here, and this is our first stop today.
the trolley, and we enjoy coming down here, and this is our first stop today. the trolley, and we enjoy coming down here, and this is our first stop today.
So you've been on the train quite a few times before? So you've been on the train quite a few times before?
So you've been on the train quite a few times before?
Quite a few times.
Quite a few times. Quite a few times.
Matter of fact, they like to ride it maybe three or four times in the same day, going
Matter of fact, they like to ride it maybe three or four times in the same day, going Matter of fact, they like to ride it maybe three or four times in the same day, going
back and forth.
back and forth. back and forth.
So for anyone who hasn't done it, what would you tell them? So for anyone who hasn't done it, what would you tell them?
So for anyone who hasn't done it, what would you tell them?
Well, I'd come down here and try it at least once, and I know you'll like it.
Well, I'd come down here and try it at least once, and I know you'll like it. Well, I'd come down here and try it at least once, and I know you'll like it.
We love this train, this little trolley.
We love this train, this little trolley. We love this train, this little trolley.
What about you? What about you?
What about you?
Well, I worked for the railroad, and I'm sort of a rail fan, and I know a lot of
Well, I worked for the railroad, and I'm sort of a rail fan, and I know a lot of
Well, I worked for the railroad, and I'm sort of a rail fan, and I know a lot of history about the red car.
history about the red car.
history about the red car.
Talking with Blanco, one of the motormen, I'm sorry, drivers, one of the motor people Talking with Blanco, one of the motormen, I'm sorry, drivers, one of the motor people
Talking with Blanco, one of the motormen, I'm sorry, drivers, one of the motor people
on this train. on this train.
on this train.
What decided you to do what you're doing? What decided you to do what you're doing?
What decided you to do what you're doing?
I just, I love what I do.
I just, I love what I do.
I just, I love what I do.
I've been doing it for five years, and it's just, I get to meet people from all over
I've been doing it for five years, and it's just, I get to meet people from all over
I've been doing it for five years, and it's just, I get to meet people from all over the
the world.
the world.
world.
It's an experience of a lifetime.
It's an experience of a lifetime.
It's an experience of a lifetime.
I'm also a waitress, and that's how I came to be here.
I'm also a waitress, and that's how I came to be here.
I'm also a waitress, and that's how I came to be here.
I met my boss, and that's how I came here.
I met my boss, and that's how I came here.
I met my boss, and that's how I came here.
That's absolutely fascinating.
That's absolutely fascinating. That's absolutely fascinating.
She tells us she was a waitress, and now you're doing this.
She tells us she was a waitress, and now you're doing this. She tells us she was a waitress, and now you're doing this. That's quite a big change. That's quite a big change.
That's quite a big change.
Oh, it is, a tremendous change.
Oh, it is, a tremendous change.
Oh, it is, a tremendous change.
But you mentioned an interesting thing.
But you mentioned an interesting thing. But you mentioned an interesting thing.
You said, "Get to meet people."
You said, "Get to meet people." You said, "Get to meet people." You have to have, what, people talent, I guess, for dealing with people?
You have to have, what, people talent, I guess, for dealing with people?
You have to have, what, people talent, I guess, for dealing with people?
Customers, it's all about greeting guests.
Customers, it's all about greeting guests.
Customers, it's all about greeting guests.
We meet guests from all over the world.
We meet guests from all over the world.
We meet guests from all over the world.
We have regulars that come on all the time.
We have regulars that come on all the time.
We have regulars that come on all the time.
We get to see them.
We get to see them.
We get to see them. Since they were little, they come every weekend.
Since they were little, they come every weekend.
Since they were little, they come every weekend.
We see them grow up.
We see them grow up.
We see them grow up.
It's really interesting.
It's really interesting.
It's really interesting.
We're talking with, tell me your name. We're talking with, tell me your name.
We're talking with, tell me your name.
Devetta.
Devetta. Devetta.
And what do you do on this train? And what do you do on this train?
And what do you do on this train?
I'm actually assistant manager, but I also come out here and I do lunches, and
I'm actually assistant manager, but I also come out here and I do lunches, and I'm actually assistant manager, but I also come out here and I do lunches, and I either conduct or operate. I either conduct or operate.
I either conduct or operate.
You do lunches on the train?
You do lunches on the train?
You do lunches on the train?
Yes.
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 And what did you do before you did this?
And what did you do before you did this? And what did you do before you did this?
I was waitress.
I was waitress. I was a waitress.
You were a waitress in San Pedro? You were a waitress in San Pedro?
You were a waitress in San Pedro?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Where? Where?
Where?
Think cafes, right there on Fifth Street.
Think cafes, right there on Fifth Street. Think cafes, right there on Fifth Street.
What decided you to come on the train? What decided you to come on the train?
What decided you to come on the train?
I had known the manager at the time.
I had known the manager at the time. I had known the manager at the time.
He was a customer of mine, and, you know, we got along fairly well, and he always used
He was a customer of mine, and, you know, we got along fairly well, and he always used He was a customer of mine, and, you know, we got along fairly well, and he always used
to say, "If I ever have an opening, I want to hire you."
to say, "If I ever have an opening, I want to hire you." to say, "If I ever have an opening, I want to hire you."
He would always tell me that.
He would always tell me that. He would always tell me that.
And one day, he had an opening, and I came.
And one day, he had an opening, and I came. And one day, he had an opening, and I came.
He must have recognized that you know how to work and deal with people? He must have recognized that you know how to work and deal with people?
He must have recognized that you know how to work and deal with people?
I think so.
I think so. I think so.
I think that's why he hired me.
I think that's why he hired me. I think that's why he hired me.
And what about the satisfaction of doing what you do? And what about the satisfaction of doing what you do?
And what about the satisfaction of doing what you do?
Do you like this? Do you like this?
Do you like this?
Oh, I love my job.
Oh, I love my job. Oh, I love my job.
Love my job.
Love my job. Love my job.
I don't hate driving to work, that's for sure.
I don't hate driving to work, that's for sure. I don't hate driving to work, that's for sure.
Okay, so if you're wondering what to do in San Pedro, for a dollar, come on down Okay, so if you're wondering what to do in San Pedro, for a dollar, come on down
Okay, so if you're wondering what to do in San Pedro, for a dollar, come on down
here to San Pedro.
here to San Pedro.
here to San Pedro. You'll see the days and times and opening times on your screen right now.
You'll see the days and times and opening times on your screen right now.
You'll see the days and times and opening times on your screen right now. Okay, this is John Clayton saying, "Thanks for watching. Okay, this is John Clayton saying, "Thanks for watching.
Okay, this is John Clayton saying, "Thanks for watching.
I'll see you next time on Armchair Traveler." I'll see you next time on Armchair Traveler."
I'll see you next time on Armchair Traveler."
Good morning. Shhh. I want to welcome everybody to our city council meeting today. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingdale, Buzquino, Sudio, Englander, Fuentes, Weza, Corretz, LaBange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Wesson, 11 members present a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of minutes.
Okay, Mr. Englander moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Committee resolutions for approval.
Corretz moves. Buzquino seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, it is Tuesday and that would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody to rise and I'm going to ask Mr. Englander if he'd lead us today.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate the honor. I want to recognize, as we often do, our first responders that are traveling overseas, but I also want to recognize the ones here locally. We had two massive fires yesterday in Granada Hills and they saved property and lives. And so, as we salute our flag, we think of our freedom, but also our first responders that put their lives on the line each and every day. If you'll please, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, first there is a request for a member to continue item four to June 30th and item 16 to May 5th.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order.
Item one is an item known for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that item one A and C may be received and filed inasmuch as the lien for item one A has been paid and the property for item one C is an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling and exempt from lien. Also, the lien amount for item one F should be reduced to $1,159.10 due to receipt of partial payment.
Okay, so without objection, that's how we'll deal with those issues. Do we have cards on the remaining?
Yes, there are cards.
Okay, so let's hold that item and move on to the next section of our agenda.
Items two through nine are items which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold item eight on the desk.
Okay, let's do that for now. Mr. O'Farrell?
Mr. President, item seven called special, please.
Okay, let's hold seven for Mr. O'Farrell. And now, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. That brings us where?
Items 10 through 17 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items 11, 13, 14, 15, and 17.
Okay, let's hold those items and let us vote on the remaining.
Mr. President, there is a request to hold item 12 on the desk.
Okay, then, let's hold those items and vote on what's left. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, so, members, before we move on to presentations, I'd like to take care of some business quickly. If we could start off with item 15, Mr. Walsh.
Yes, sir. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. This is number 15. Beautification project, Weza and Buzquino. We're 100% in favor of beautification. Number 14, remember, we're not a guy, "I'm not one to stand and say all of us are crooks and white guys." I'm not that kind of person. You're doing a good job in beautification. I wish you'd spend a little more money outside of Hollywood Boulevard for the tourists and a little more money where the black and the brown and the yellow people live. We don't see, and incidentally-
Let's stay on this subject.
The subject is beautification and racism. The subject is always racism.
No, come on, Mr. Walsh.
Hollywood, I know you're a white guy. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Your time is expired.
Uncle Tom.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Walsh is not staying on the subject. I want to officially let you and all know that if he continues to do that, then he will forfeit his time. Okay, with that said, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Go ahead.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. These are, you know, you really need to find out, what does vacate, what does vacating mean? What does vacating an alley mean? That means that the city hands it over to a developer for $1. The city property goes to the developer. And I'm telling you right now, and this happens all the time in this city, other cities don't do this. They make the developers pay, but if there's an important piece of property here that the developer needs to complete, the destruction of the neighborhood with high-rise apartments, this city council, they won't say a word. No one's going to say, "You're full of BS, John. This vacating doesn't exist. You're crazy." They're going to keep quiet and they're going to give the developer the alley. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Sergeant, could we move the chair from the center aisle so I can watch the clock? It's time to vote. Mr. LaBange, you wanted to-
Mr. President, just because we have so many great guests here today, we do vacate public property in the interest of good development, safety, and all concerns, so I wanted to share that with you so you know that the city council is looking out for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, Mr. Walsh, don't go anywhere. Let's go to 13, item 13, Mr. Walsh and Ms. Peirman. Donna, if you're close, please come. Come on, let's go, let's go.
Okay, item 13. This is the jurisdiction, this is another of the property, okay, this is dedicating this as officially park property. I don't see anybody here asking for this to be park property. The problem with, right now, is we're in an enormous budget crunch. When you add one park to the system, it means you have to lower the budgets of all the other parks. And as you know, these parks are Bloomingdale. You damn well knew it wasn't going to be in a black neighborhood, huh? Unless, say, your Bloomingdale is maybe or is a bro. I'm telling you right now, parks for white people, I'm a race traitor, okay? I'm a traitor to my race. Parks for white people, crap for blacks, browns, yellows.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Walsh. Okay, let's prepare, no, now he's disrupting the meeting. Ms. Peirman, come on.
Okay. Hi. I see over this is the park, by the way, if you're really going to get down and say what it is, all of this area is probably Hispanic. But anyway, I like parks, I think parks are nice. My only problem I have is about the, we have a water shortage and generally, the parks have a big thing of grass that you have to water. So if you could figure out a way to somehow have grass that doesn't take too much water, then I think a park would be nice in that area. I don't know if there's any trees and along with squirrels and then, because a lot of people do matter and I, a lot of people that are white are also not low-income.
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject.
So I think we need a park, is what the point is. I think a lot of people like the park, but as you said, you better not lower the money for other areas and we have to have something that doesn't use too much water because, hey, we got a water shortage because they took away our rain. And bring back that, and I'd be doing conferencing. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 14, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Murphy. Sean, just come on down.
Morning, Mr. President. I had a celebration, my 51st birthday Friday.
Happy birthday.
Yeah. I am on the subject. Item 14, I'm for this item. Carolyn Ramsey for District Four.
No, come on, Sean, stay on the subject. Okay, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is for the Bernard Parks District. So, his district has been neglected, although he's done a pretty good job. This is old redevelopment project. We destroyed redevelopment, it doesn't exist anymore, but we have to pay off these debts for. So the Worksore Centers in Council District Eight, which is a largely minority district, again, when you are not racist, we are 100% behind you. Great work. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Corretz, let me acknowledge you quickly. Mr. Corretz? Okay. Now, Mr. Corretz, I think we have to have the findings made by the city attorney. Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that the city council offer a reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the victim named Christopher John, Christopher John Paul, who was killed April 22nd at approximately 2:30 p.m., walking home from his apartment complex in the 3300 block of Mentone Avenue. Immediate action is required to capture the suspect for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the subsequent motion.
Okay, let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, a homicide always strikes a deadly blow, not just to the victim, but to the victim's families, loved ones, friends and neighbors, and even an entire community. This past Wednesday, April 22nd, a 33-year-old man by the name of Christopher John Paul was slain by gunfire not far from the area where I went to junior high school, at Palms Junior High, a few years ago. He was from Michigan and he was considered to be a nice, quiet, gentle person who kept to himself. He was walking home to his apartment complex and as he approached the rear gate of his apartment, an unknown assailant shot him from behind. There's no apparent motive or leads. The community of Palms is distraught and is mourning the loss of this young man, this young man and other victims of crime, but there's been a strong neighborhood watch response, a neighborhood council response. I attended a meeting last night that had over 400 people. Palms is not willing to accept this deadly risk and murder in its midst. Palms has been a pretty safe haven from violent crime over the years, so this homicide and other shootings, perhaps unrelated to this murder that occurred in the same approximate area the week before, have rattled Palms. The response has been one of intense positive resolve not to let such violence continue. And for that, I want to thank LAPD Deputy Chief Beatrice Girmalla, who's here with us today, as well as LAPD West Bureau and their homicide detectives, along with LAPD Pacific Division. All have responded well to my requests for additional patrols and other resources, but they've also made a huge impact by showing up to our recent neighborhood watch and neighborhood council events that I was also privileged to attend in response to this violence. They've been much moved by the community response and have told me it's important and timely that we introduce a reward motion, so that is what I'm doing today for the recommended amount of $50,000. Now, I'd like to invite Deputy Chief Girmalla to help us with an update.
Thank you so much, Mr. Corretz. It's a privilege to be here in council chambers today, President Wesson. The tragedy that occurred in broad daylight on April 22nd in the Palms area of Pacific Division is something that brings us here today sadly, asking for your help and support to get some leads, some glimmer of hope, not only to bring justice to Mr. Paul, but to his family as well. It's my privilege also today to introduce you to the officer in charge of Operations West Bureau's homicide team to give you an update and further information, Lieutenant John Radke. John?
Good morning. We really need your help on this case. The men and women of West Bureau Homicide have been working on this case all week long. We have no witnesses to the case. There is absolutely no known motive for why this person was killed. He was a very innocent man. He went to church, daily mass at St. Augustine Catholic Church in Culver City, and he simply went to the store to get a coffee and he's coming back and someone followed him into the alley. So we're hopeful that this reward will get someone to step forward and tell us what really occurred. Thank you.
So, thank you again to the LAPD for all your good work on this and the other cases. The other cases, we have suspects in custody, we have leads. This one is different because it was a completely innocuous gentleman. There's no apparent motive that anyone can think of and there are no witnesses, no leads. So, we believe there is somebody out there that knows about this and we hope that this significant reward will help bring them out of the woodwork. So, I ask you for an aye vote and to pass this reward motion.
Thank you, sir. Let's prepare to vote on this, members. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, Madam Clerk, before I call on Mr. O'Farrell for his presentation, let's move forward on item eight. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. O'Farrell for presentation. And item 14 forthwith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, when you put books in the hands of a child, it opens up an entire world of Packing the council chamber this morning is a very small sampling of the 7,100 active volunteers throughout the library systems that volunteer in a number of ways, through the Adult Literacy Program, the Friends of the Library, Central Library Docents, Homework Assistance, Storytelling and Reading, otherwise known as the STAR Program, adult book discussion leaders, library program aides, collection inventory aides, media technicians, special project aides, and teen volunteers, and I would like them all to stand. If you're in the chamber and you're a volunteer for the library, please stand. Maybe you're already standing. Every single one of them deserve a special recognition, but I would like to recognize one in particular, and that is the First Lady of the Fourth Council District, Ms. Bridget LaBange is here with us and she is-
Where is?
Bridget, where are you?
She's probably hiding. There she is. Let's give Bridget a round of applause. We're doing that, Mr. LaBange, because she doesn't want us to because she's such a humble person.
That she is.
But we did it anyway. Mr. O'Farrell?
And Bridget is President of the Los Feliz Branch Library, Friends of, that's what Bridget does. All right, so, as Chair of Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, and River Committee, which oversees our Los Angeles Public Library system, I am pleased to stand here today with all of our friends, our generous volunteers, and our incredible general manager, John Zabo. Another round of applause for John. Los Angeles is so fortunate to have one of the nation's greatest library systems with a central library and, as I might have mentioned, 72 branches throughout the city. Our library is great for many reasons. Its innovative programs and services, the great leadership of our library commissioners and city librarian, the staff of professional librarians, and the passionate support of Angelenos, especially those who dedicate time and energy as volunteers. Now, if you add up all of the hours, just from 2014 alone, and you monetized those hours, it would add up to $4,500,000 of volunteerism. Which underscores perfectly how this city depends on the kindness of volunteers to make it work. Indeed, we do. Volunteers greatly enhance the programs and services offered by the library and enrich the lives of people throughout the city. I would now like to bring up our city librarian, John Zabo, to say a few words. John?
You got it. Appreciate it. Thank you so much, Councilmember O'Farrell, Council President Wesson, the entire city council for recognizing our amazing volunteers and of course, for supporting the Los Angeles Public Library and all of the great work that our staff and volunteers do. We love our volunteers at the Los Angeles Public Library. How fortunate we are that thousands of residents of this city devote their time and energy to do good work and to support the work of our staff in providing impactful, life-changing services through the public library. And you heard Councilmember O'Farrell mention some of those services that our volunteers provide. Teaching adults to read, leading English language conversation classes, helping young people to develop a lifelong love of reading through our STAR Program, and the list goes on and on in ways in which volunteers support our libraries. Through 70 Friends Groups, we have 70 groups that exist solely to support various branches in our library system and departments at Central Library. Last week, as you probably know, our libraries, the Los Angeles Public Library, learned that we were the recipient of a 2015 National Medal for Museum and Library Service. This is the highest honor for a library to receive. And certainly, that is due to the great support from our mayor, city council, the residents of this city, but the people behind me, our amazing volunteers and all of the others who couldn't be here today, volunteers throughout our libraries, absolutely share in that award and certainly can take credit for helping to bring that award about and that recognition. And also, it goes without saying, but I want to mention it every time I get a chance, our incredible staff, hard-working staff. You do not have a successful volunteer program- You do not have a successful volunteer program without hard-working staff who support those volunteers, who recruit those volunteers, who say thank you every day to those volunteers, not just on one day a year, and we want to thank them. And Councilmember O'Farrell mentioned the 171,000 hours and the $4.5 million contribution. It is so important to be able to monetize that and talk about the value of that contribution, but of course, we know that that contribution is absolutely priceless to our library. So, when we're giving this significant contribution, we have a check that represents this that we would like to present on behalf of the volunteers to the city and city council. Again, thank you all so much for the recognition for our volunteers.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank all the volunteers. It makes a difference, and when I reflected, when our fine city librarian, chief librarian, was speaking, I reflected how many lives do those in the libraries touch? How many students go through a library and they touched and they get on a trail? In a city of ours, a city of angels, Patrice, there are many great people like yourselves who do certain roles, but a library is passing a baton of knowledge, and there's a torch on top of the central library for the light of reading is what is the key. I just rise to thank you, because this is the last year that I'll be here, and I want to thank all librarians, especially all the staff from the Central Library who are against the wall like bad boys from Marshall High. You should get out here too, staff. And the same thing is true with our Recreation and Parks Department. How many coaches have affected the lives of young women and young men by what they've done? This is the great side of city government. This is the great side that changes the ways lives are. And I just wanted to flash my card to you there, John, to let you know. Okay? So, I want to do that. Flash it. Where's your card, Felipe? Flash it right now. Come on now, Felipe. Felipe Fuentes, he's good. He's real good. He's got it right there. Good job, Felipe. Also, in the Sister City Program, I was in Tokyo this last year, and in Tokyo, we brought a bunch of books of Los Angeles to share with the people of Tokyo. It's an Olympic city, it's a friendship city, and I went in, and there was a librarian about this tall, right here, and I told him my favorite book was Mike Mulligan and the Steam Shovel. And I gave him that, too, along with a bunch of others. We took a tour of the Metropolitan Library, which is in a park. It's a beautiful library in Tokyo. About halfway through the tour, that librarian came running up, and she had Mike Mulligan in one hand in English and Mike Mulligan in Japanese, and it just shows how great the world is. And does anybody know what the name of Mike Mulligan's Steam Shovel was? You know, Mr. Sedill? Mary Ann. It's a great book. You should read it, man, Mike Mulligan and the Steam Shovel. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Los Angeles Public Library. You're the best.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. You can take that $4,500,000 and put it in the bank, and the bank is standing right here with all of us today. So, it is on this day as volunteerism month of April draws to a close, I think there is no higher purpose than to honor the volunteers and the library system, Los Angeles Public Library Volunteers Appreciation Day, and I present this certificate to John Zabo and all of the incredible volunteers standing with us today, enriching our neighborhoods across the city. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm going to... Hold the block in there. One, two, three. Everyone looking up. It's just lucky you can have the award. Thank you all.
We'll have this checked to get some airplane tickets.
Okay, I'm going to spend a little time doing general public comment. Phyllis Doherty, Donna Pierman, and Sean Murphy, general public comment. If we could please clear the center aisle. Mr. Murphy, come forward.
How can I get through those ropes back there? You can't. Do not go to Baltimore. I don't want my fans going up to Baltimore. You will not get back to LA in one piece. You're risking your own lives going up there. Don't go till things calm down. I told you I had a 51st birthday Friday, anticipating an Armenian march. I had a good time. It was a long, it was a six, somebody didn't tell me it was a long, six-long miles. Just tell me next time, Mr. Krikorian. I had a good time, though. And then I had my birthday dinner, and then I went to St. Charles Festival. Keep our libraries open. Congratulations to those people. Carolyn Ramsey for the fourth. Thank you.
Phyllis, please come forward, Ms. Doherty.
Phyllis Doherty, effective May 4th, it's important for you to know that there will be no animal control officers at the Harbor Animal Shelter. Anyone that has a problem in the Harbor area will have to have an officer dispatched from South LA. This doesn't make sense, it doesn't save money, it increases costs, because now you will have the same number of officers, their equipment, and all of their files moved to the South LA, and they will have to drive down to the Harbor every time someone has an emergency or has an animal-related problem. The residents will undoubtedly begin calling LAPD, and we'll have more animal shootings that we can be pretty sure of. There is, there have been so many hirees in the city, why is it that we only have 43 animal control officers on a seven-day, 24-hour basis to cover 469 square miles and 4 million people? This is shameful in this time.
Thank you. Do I have an Aaron, is it Burt? Please come forward. Donna Pierman, did you come forward?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
This is a question I've posed to you before, Herb Wesson. One of which is, why are there no African-Americans in any of the public, private, or governmental construction projects? Specifically, the metro rail. I've asked you this with regards to the rehabbing of the Rancho Cienega Park, the median strips on Washington, as well as the park that has been named in honor of your mother. At the time, you said you had no idea. Hopefully, at this time, you do. Anyone on the council have any idea why there are visibly no African-Americans on any of the construction projects? I'm leaving the floor open for a response.
There's no give and take when you, we listen to what you say and we move on. So, Donna, are you behind Mr. Burt? Come forward. No, your time has expired, sir. Your sergeants, your time's expired. We can talk on the side some other time. But I have to call, you're disrupting the meeting, and I need the next person to come forward.
Okay, people, this Donna, people in the valley have the right to speak. We opened Van Nuys Video Conferencing. We don't want a police state. We shouldn't have to fear the police. We shouldn't have to be frisked or arrested by police just for a look at them. Nobody should. So, let's work together and fix things. All lives matter. Somehow, it seems the police won't protect what they, well, they only want to protect what they want to protect or told to protect. So, we need to be able to protect ourselves. We need to have our guns. Anyway, politicians don't care about the public either, and Obama doesn't care about the public. They're not, you see in Baltimore, they're not protecting the community. You have to protect yourselves. So, councilmen on TV spoke for the crowd. Politicians don't care about us. Obama is working, Obama doesn't care about us either, and he's working with the terrorists.
Thank you. Thank you. And did I call your name, sir? No, I'll get to you. Mr. Walsh? Anybody who has a name, a card, we'll get to you. Mr. Walsh? Was that Mr. Watkins? You're after Mr. Walsh. Yes, sir.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. They won't show our face, just for the people out there. The person who complained about racism at MTA was a black man, but the racist running this show won't show you his black face. That's the way he treats black people who don't get on their knees in front of him. Vote for Rue versus Ramsey. Tonight, at the Castle Argyle, that's on Franklin and Yucca, there will be a debate between Ramsey and Rue. We must vote for Rue, because this city has a population that is 1/8 Asian, and they have no seats on the city council. Meanwhile, you're asking the Korean businessmen to invest in here. That's racism. Vote for Rue. We need a balanced racial city council. You make me sick to my stomach, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Watkins, Bill? Bill Watkins?
Good morning. Thanks. Hi, Mr. Luisar. I'm from your district. My dad helps you at Silesian, Bill Watkins. John Watkins helps you. I just want to say hello, and I'd sure like to meet you today or at a time where your office can set aside time. I brought a card for you. I've been in your area for, coming on five years, and I haven't done so well at the El Sereno office. Mr. Sperry has kind of threw me around for a while about fireworks, and I never got anywhere. I'd love to take 10 or 15 minutes sometime. I'd really appreciate that. I think I could help in our area. I'm from Rose Hill, and I just have a bird's eye, 13 years sober, and I have a decent look at what's going on and where the sidewalks are that need help and the streets, for my area at least. I'd sure like to help you. That's probably the main thing I wanted to say, if we just have a minute. I wish you all well and congratulations on getting your seat again. I'm printing the election code at home right now, and I hope you guys can have the time to review the election code soon, the election code. I think we need some help. It's been since '07 since we reviewed that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so, we're going to discontinue temporarily general public comment, take up some actual items that are on the agenda. Mr., I don't see Mr. O'Farrell. Why don't we take up Item 1? And on Item 1, we will be continuing 1E. Am I correct? Is it 1E for two weeks? And let's make sure that at that time, we have a sign, someone that can do sign, so that 1E will be continued for two weeks. Madam Clerk, what day is that?
May 12th.
That'll be May 12th? Okay, with that said, we'll go to 1. Okay, Donna Pierman? Zelda James?
Okay, we still need to do something about these liens to make it so that people could pay for them. It seems to me if large corporations could give waivers and not have to pay for these things, then we should be able to at least wipe out any penalties. Just pay what the original thing was, no matter how long it took or how hard it was. I really think you got to get rid of the, you know, things that are over, the penalties and stuff like that, and then we can work out a deal for these people to pay, you know, so that cities still won't lose any revenue, because I know it's all about revenue, and you don't seem to care about anything else. You let car dealerships and all the rest of them have it. So, anyway, so, basically, that's it. Work it out with them so they can pay it and get rid of the penalties, so it can actually be paid and won't be ridiculous, so they won't panic. Anyway, bring back video conferencing, because we need it. Thank you.
Stay on the subject, okay? Ms. James, and do I have a Louise, last name begins with an O? Ms. James, please go over.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am here asking that the lien against my property be removed. All of the violations were complied with in 2006, and so I don't know why I'm being penalized for something that was done and taken care of then. It's about it, I think. Everything is done. The trash has been removed. The area hasn't been watered, because there is no, we're cutting back on water. It's two small pieces of land that they're talking about. The house has been painted. Part of the house that was not painted was because there was a climbing bush there that was sticking down, and it has to be repaired, so why am I getting penalized? I have Ms. Stewart here, who lived in the house and can tell you more about it. We have pictures of everything being taken care of, so...
No, what I'll do, you can't share your time. I'm going to ask that the representative from your area chat with you on the side. If the two of you could go to the side over here on my left. Mr. Buscayino, can we send a rep? Okay, in fact, here he is, the young man. Ms. James?
Yes.
Raise your hand? No, raise. Who's going to deal over here? You see these gentlemen? They're raising their hands. In front of you, front row, front row, if you'd come chat with them. Okay, if we can restart the clock. Louise?
I want this, I want this excuse, because there's a lot of racial discrimination and a lot of hate on my block, and the guy's causing all the problems. For me being here, wants me to pay this fine. He's still coming around, he walks his dog up and down the street, keeps on looking towards my property. When he sees me, he looks at me like he just hates Mexicans, and that's what's causing all this problem, just because I have a couple of boxes, because I feed the homeless, and I distribute food from my house, and that's what's causing all this problem. I want this matter excused. And the last time I was here, you were sitting on that desk, behind that desk, on that chair, and you were eating melon, and that's no respect for this court. And I was you that was eating the melon when I was speaking here the other day, the first time I was here, and I want this matter excused. And if you don't want an excuse, I'm willing to give you a payment plan, and have the payment plan here. I could just afford what I could give you, because I'm out of work, and I don't want to lose this property, because I'm trying to put a, I'm trying to do a short sale, and you guys are just messing everything up for me, you know? So, I want this matter excused, because it's just a bunch of, the court took advantage of me, because I don't know how to read and write. I went to Glendale High, never learned how to read and write, and I think all of you guys are to blame for it, you know, because you guys just threw me aside, and I'm trying to help the homeless, and all of you guys don't help the homeless like the church... to lose this property because I'm trying to put a, I'm trying to do a short sale, and you guys are just messing everything up for me, you know? So I want this matter excused because it's just a bunch of, the court took advantage of me because I don't know how to read and write. I went to Glendale High, never learned how to read and write, and I think all of you guys are to blame for it, you know, because you guys just threw me aside, and I'm trying to help the homeless, and all of you guys don't help the homeless like the church...
Stay on the subject.
You know, I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not getting, I, I, you guys just...
Thank you, thank you, sir. Is it Donna Stewart? If you come forward, and Mr. Walsh, if you come forward. Mr. Walsh passes. If I could get Sedana? Okay, now, I thought we were working your, but here, come on forward, and then Wayne Spindler. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, yes. I live at 1718 East 113th Street, and for the past five or six years, I'm 66 years old. I have been improving my residence. I don't know why this came back, because this is so old, and our property is, is really in a good position right now. I mean, it's, it's two lots there, and everything is up to par. Sure, we can't use a lot of water because of the shortage, but the yard has been picked up. I have a gardener go there. He blows the trash up every two weeks. I don't know why we have to pay a lien, because that's gonna raise my rent, and I worked hard over there. I mean, I really worked hard getting that yard together. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Begging, begging. You've reduced black Americans to begging.
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject.
You're, you just don't want to know what item one is about. You just want to lie. It's about racial zoning, and these liens in CD 12 are against Latinos that are hated by whites in the neighborhood. And in CD 15, you have apartheid going on in that district. They're putting up all kinds of things against homeowners there that have been there for many, many decades. Now, you look at this list. A gentleman came up here and offered a payment plan. You don't even want to talk to him. That's because on these whole set of items, this is racist, it's anti-middle class, and it's a genocide of the homeowner in this community, in this 417 square miles of this mafia-run city. And it's gotta stop. You always have these items on the queue, and you never forgive a single lien. These ladies just told you they can't water their lawns. The DWP told them not, don't water the lawn. She complied. You told her to clean up the property. She complied. You told her to pay property taxes. She complied. And yet, here we are in Mr. Buscagno's district, taking these African-American homeowners and lynching them economically for these ridiculous excessive fines. When are you going to allow amnesty? Amnesty for people that are trying to live a decent life in this corrupt-run city? So, you want to give up people's rights? Forgive all of these liens? Thank you.
Thank you. On, Madam Clerk, on item 1G, it's my understanding that they would prefer that the office is requesting a 30-day, one E. What did I say? One E. Instead of two weeks, a 30-day continuance. That would bring us to what date?
May 29th.
Okay, so without objection, that's the order? So now, let's prepare to, to vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Members, and, Mr. President, thank you for this opportunity. It's with, with a degree of sadness that I present to you Ricardo Moreno. This is Ricardo Moreno. You have seen him because he's omnipresent in every rally, every meeting, every discussion, anything that has to do with social justice, anything that has to do with healing the heart, anything that has to do with helping us create a better, more progressive, more just city and society, he is there. And so, it's with sadness because Ricardo Moreno, who is the president and founder of the Los Angeles Simón Bolívar Association, a civic group since 2002, is now taking a new post. A new post in Washington DC, where he is moving to become the Minister Counselor to the Venezuelan Embassy in our capital. He's joined by family and friends, including Venezuelan superstar Fernando Carillo. He is a giant in this city, and you can see it by those who have joined him today, in the social justice and faith-based movement of this town. He formerly was a regional organizer for Chirla. He worked on the pastoral staff of the Westminster Presbyterian Church in Orange County, the Emmanuel Presbyterian Church in Los Angeles, and, most recently, a very robust and energy-filled, faithful-filled Pasadena Presbyterian Church. He's a recipient of numerous awards, including the Los Angeles Bar Association has called him the advocate for immigration. He has a bachelor's in theology from the Latin American Theological Seminary, a master of divinity from the San Francisco Theological Seminary, a certificate in ethics and public policy from the Divinity School of Harvard University, and from the Department of Religion and Culture from the University of Southern California. He's currently accepted into a Doctor of Ministry at Fuller Theological Seminary, and his studies will focus on Latino leadership in a multicultural context. He is known here, he is known throughout the state, throughout the nation, and throughout Latin America as a giant and a voice for those who have been oppressed, and for those who yearn for freedom, for dignity, and for respect. He is, I will say to you, on a personal note, one of my dearest friends, someone who you can always count on, someone who just always has the capacity to say the right thing at the right moment in your moments of great need. He is just such an incredible human being, and you can always feel the presence of God when you're with him, and the presence of justice as when you're near him. So with that, I present to you one of my dearest friends, and as I said with sadness, I bid him a farewell to Washington DC. And I know, though, that now when I visit, I will have somebody to meet me when I get there. With that, the distinguished Ricardo Moreno.
Mr. President, city council members, my family, colleagues, and friends in the struggle for a better world. It is an honor to stand here today before you, and I'm humbled by the recognition of my small contribution to the city and to the cause of inclusion and justice. I came to LA from Venezuela in October 1991, and the Nicaraguan friend who picked me up at the airport said to me, "Welcome to Mexico." Even that the same night, my first meal was a pupusa salvadoreña. So for some months, I had to survive eating tacos and pupusas. It was not until years later that I discovered that in LA, they sell the corn flour imported from Venezuela, arina pan, which is the main ingredient to make arepas, the favorite national dish for Venezuela. So, in a real sense, Los Angeles is a global Latin American city. Early 1992, my Hollywood Disneyland Beverly Hills experience suddenly ended when I was awakened to the sad reality of the racial class struggle in Los Angeles with the Rodney King riots, and the Proposition 187, supported by a governor that there's no even word or time to mention here. In that context, in 1998, I meet then-resigned elected Assemblymember Gil Cedillo, who was introduced to me by Nativo López at a high school in Long Beach, where he was scheduled to talk about his first driver license bill. I also remember I met their Chicano leader, Bel Corona, and the rest's history. Here we are, 22 years later, which is exactly the same time I spent growing up in my other city, Valencia, Venezuela. During the last decade, I had the privilege of traveling all over the United States, and I can tell that I always kept wanting to come back to LA, because there is nothing like LA in this country. This is a city of dreams come true, a city of welcoming, a city of inclusion, a city of progressive politics, even a city of progressive religion. Los Angeles of 2015 is a very different of the Los Angeles of 1992, and that is in doing great part to the work of Gil Cedillo and elected officials representing the different districts across the city, the work of the many community leaders who are here with me today. I only joined the struggle in 1992, but many have been struggling before me, and because that, Los Angeles is a very seated today. There are still many challenges ahead of us, but I know that this city, under the leadership of my other good friend, Eric Garcetti, and all of you, will continue to work for a better Los Angeles. There is even now an arepa, a place where a small Venezuelan business owner makes ancelarepas in the Garmin District, which you can go there and have arepas in San Pedro. So now, my fellow Venezuelans, like Fernando and others, are obligated to only eat tacos and pupusas in Los Angeles, but you can have arepas. I want to end, taking the opportunity to say to my daughters, Priscilla here, and Heidi, look around that table. There are too many guys sitting in that power table. And I think through education, hard work, and commitment to this community, you can join Yuri Martinez in the future and lead this city into the 21st century. And to my son Omar David, who is here in the back, oh, well, we already had a Latino mayor, but we're still waiting to elect the first Latino governor of California in modern history. Remember, E. Moreno was one of the founding fathers of this great city. You can find his name in Placito Alvera. Perhaps Moreno is an easier surname to pronounce than Villarrealgoza, even for the European immigrants who came decades later. Gil, you are a true hero for many in this community. You are a man of the people, a man of the conviction, and I'm blessed to contain you as a friend. I deeply thank you for your leadership and for your friendship. Thank you, you city council members, for the work you do. You are and will be in my prayers. Thank you for all the community friends and leaders who are here with me and who allowed me to walk alongside you in this struggle. Indeed, it's an honor to be in your presence today. And after 22 years, I can say, even when I'm going to Washington, I'm an Angelino. I am a Dodgers, Lakers, and Galaxy fan, and I always will be. With solidarity, Ricardo. Thank you. And I know you have something to give it to me, but before, Gil, I want to give you a good replica of our national and Latin American hero, Simón Bolívar. Keep it in your office as a memory of the lucha, of the struggle.
Let me, let me share with you a token of our appreciation for your great leadership in the city over these incredible years. 1991, Rolling Thunder, '94, Proposition 187, incredible electoral victories in the late '90s, the mega marches, the never-ending call for immigration reform and justice for immigrants. We appreciate your leadership, and we offer you this as a token of our appreciation.
Thank you, brother. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Coretts? Would you like to, or let me just check for one second?
Good to see you. Thank you so much. It's just a deal over this guy? Okay. That's been a long time. Good luck to you. Good luck to you. You have a good day, sweetheart? Oh, good. You're an Angelino now.
No, it's my...
Okay, Mr. Coretts, why don't we prepare for item 17? So, I'll ask the department folk to come to the table. If we can get the representatives from Wreckin' Park, Mr., and then I'll kick it over to Okay, Mr. Coretts, how would you like to proceed?
If I'm given the opportunity, I'd like to make sort of an opening statement and...
Go right ahead.
And ask some questions. First of all, colleagues, I'm still flabbergasted by the fact that I...
to take over the various duties associated with running the Greek. L.A. Times thought this was a bad idea, and they editorialized that, and stated that the city should not get into a business in which it has no expertise. At this point, I'm still astonished by the idea myself and by the department and the Commission's willingness to utterly ignore the Council request, which is why I felt duty-bound, despite the fact that I really didn't want to touch this hot potato once again, and probably none of the rest of us did either, to call for the department's general manager, who is here, to report to us on why and how he thought this was an idea worth entertaining. I believe the city does have no expertise, and it's an underfunded, horribly stretched apartment, which has done an amazing job of staying afloat and doing great work with far too few resources. But I think taking on this additional challenge seems like just too much. And I would point out, in a 2009 Community Needs Assessment Report, in that report it was said that Recreation and Parks, quote, "tries to do too much," and, quote, "needs to stay focused on their core businesses only." Now, I have to ask some questions, but the first one I want to ask is, the Council gave pretty clear direction. I feel like the department just shined us on, to be honest. And I think this is somewhat problematic and could be precedent-setting in how a department works with the Council. Why wouldn't we just give the current operators a one-year extension and come back with an RFP that reflected the concerns and direction of the Council as we asked?
Good morning, Councilmembers. Before I answer those questions, first let me... Mike Shaw, General Manager, Recreation and Parks, joined by my left pick, Israel Assistant General Manager, Commission President Sylvia Petzoros is here, as well as Agnes Ko, who's been the project manager on the day-to-day issues with the Greek Theater and the RFP. So I'll respond to the first two questions. I mean, I don't believe... I honestly do not believe that we made any attempt to be disrespectful to this body. I do everything in my power to do the very opposite of those things, and I would hope that each of you know that that's always my intent, is to work collaboratively with the City Council and to carry out the missions and policies set forth by this body. We ran it... You know, our approach was for an original RFP, and we were engaged in that process for nearly two years. But it was ultimately met with complications that yielded an unsuccessful outcome. This has been a complicated matter, not just over the last few years, but for almost the history of this contract, of which we are reliving very similar circumstances, which was similar to the last time that this contract was bid. I do not believe that we did not listen to the Council. There was no way to salvage anything from that RFP. We had no choice other than to throw it out. The problem with throwing it out was, we didn't have... There's not nearly enough time to get another... To do another RFP in time to get somebody in place for the 2016 season. This contract expires on October 31st of this year. There's just simply not enough time. And so why not give an extension? Well, there's several reasons why not to give an extension. First and foremost, the contract has been extended several times already. And I'll just add that it's been extended with no change in financial terms over the life of that contract. We also received two unsolicited proposals to do a year, to do a year contract. One from Niederlander, which they promised $3.5 million, which is well above what we currently paid. But we also received a proposal from Live Nation for $5 million to do the very same service. It's not in our best interest to do contracting this way. We must remain and must have a competitive process for which I am mandated to carry out and make recommendations to our Board on. Any extension has to be supported as well by legal justifications to extend it outside a competitive process, and I'm not so sure we can do that. We believe that doing so without a competitive process would not yield the best value back to the department, and that's what I'm charged with, is to make sure that we're getting the best value back to this department. Having received those two proposals, what is currently in the contract indicates the high... I mean, that just shows that this value, this asset, has a lot of worth. If they're just willing to throw that kind of money at it, there's a lot of worth that we have not taken advantage of for many years. Extensions at this stage could be fraught with hurdles and could conceivably never end. We could very well end up in a year from now, be right back where we started. And that's why I have not, and I strongly believe that it's the worth, that I believe, of doing an open venue, the risk associated with that is minimal compared to the return on the revenues that we could see from the Greek Theater. So that... I mean, that's why we did not make the recommendation to extend.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Mr. President, just a few questions as well, and that is, so, all venue categories the city received just shy of $2 million in 2014, is that correct?
Correct.
In all revenue categories, as far as the cities share, based on gross receipts of right around $27 million?
Correct.
From concert?
Correct.
And other? So the question I have is, how was it the department... How do you... How have you substantiated the city receiving more revenue by going... Running the venue yourself? And what do those... What are those dollar figures?
Certainly. Well, first, if I could just clarify one point, Councilmember. We own the... I mean, the Greek Theater falls under the ownership of the department, obviously under the city, but it's in our control. However, we would not be the ones operating the Greek. This would not be operated by city staff. I want to make that... I mean, that needs to be very clear to this body. That's not our intent. Our intent is to hire a professional management company, of which there are plenty, to come in and run this. They do that at a fee. We pay them a fee, just much like we pay somebody for salary to do that. That's first and foremost. Secondly, the reason... So all of the... If you break down the different portions of the venue, you have essentially the rent that comes with the talent for using the venue. You have the food and beverage that's associated with the venue, which is one of the higher profitable pieces of the venue. You have the parking. You have the sponsorships. You have all of those things. Currently, under the existing contract, we retain 8%... I believe it's 8% of the gross of the ticket sales, of the gate... From the gate sales, and we get 6% of the gross revenue from the food and beverage, as well as the parking, and as well as the sponsorship, 6%. So to put that into context, the food and beverage last year grossed alone just shy of $3.8 million. We receive 6% of that. I'm suggesting that we go out and do it... That food and beverage belongs to the current contract. We... It's not a contract with us. It's a contract with the current operator. I'm suggesting we go out for our own food and beverage contract, of which everybody in the industry has told me we could expect anywhere from 40% to 50%. So 40% to 50% of $3.8 million is a lot more than 6%. Parking, very similar situation. Parking, I think, was right around 1.7... I think for last year was just shy of $1.8 million collected on parking. We get 6% of that. There's no magic to parking. It's just... We would probably use, you know, the same type of management company, you know. I think standard parking is the one that contracted. There would be no difference between... To anybody, noticeable difference between who's parking those cars, whether it's us, the current operator, Live Nation, any... It won't matter. They're just parking the cars. The difference is, is that we retain the majority of those funds, and we would not share in that revenue. Those are some of the bigger, you know, the bigger items of it. The rent comes along with the user agreement, which, you know, we need to negotiate and put into a contract that would be used on an event-by-event basis. But we could expect, you know, some high percentage of that as well.
Would Recreation and Parks bring aboard a facility manager to manage all of those contracts?
That's what we're recommending, is that we bring in a company that does that, and like I said, there's plenty. We would... The only thing that we would not allow... When we put that contract out, we're going to state in there that we're not going to allow co-promotion of events, because we won't... We do not want to make this an exclusive operation. So in other words, if you're managing the facility, you can't promote concerts at the facility. But they will be paid a fee, and we will ask for a fee in their qualifications, and we will hire somebody based on an RFP that we're anticipating putting out towards the end of May.
And if you will indulge me further, Mr. President, what kind of community outreach has been conducted with this proposal, in relation to this proposal?
The... Well, we started, we had... There was two meetings that we held, and I don't recall the exact dates, with some of the leadership with LFIA. There's, you know... And I'll say that we held a couple of meetings. Things began to... As we got nearer and closer to our commission action, the discussions weren't as robust as what I would like them to be. But again, everybody knows me well enough that I fully intend on and want the community engaged in this process. There's absolutely no reason why they can't have and play a bigger role in the operations and understanding, you know, their desires and what needs to be in these agreements to make sure that the things that they're concerned about are covered in these agreements, and I absolutely 100% committed to that.
So just two quick things. So if the city received $2 million last year, are you... Do you have some confidence that we could receive a whole lot more than that in terms of, you know, just general revenue generated for the public?
Yeah, based on... And I'll say this is based on our conservative pro forma numbers that we've used on taking into account all operations, including the costs and expenditures. We could expect as low as $3 million in net revenue around 50 shows, and if we are able to get more than 50, if we get closer to 70, it starts to go up closer to about $4.8 million. So it is considerably more revenue.
Okay. And then lastly, this plan, would it be... Then go through and be adopted by the Recreation and Parks Commission? Is that the mechanism?
Yeah, right. So what happened... What needs to happen now is the individual agreements need to be adopted by the Commission. So for example, the user agreement, which is essentially the standard contract per show that would be used by each promoter to use the venue. They'd have to agree to the terms of that. That has yet to go to our commission. That needs to go... That probably will be the next document to go. The food and beverage, as well as the management RP's, both, all three of those items need to go to our commission.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, and I know that I based my decision on the incredible sort of one voice that the community spoke with in rejecting the original proposal, and that's really what swayed me in this. And so I think it's just really important to listen carefully what the community has to say about this, and I'm open to considering the city actually managing this personally. But I think a lot more conversation needs to take place before we get to that, and I know that's a short time limit, though. I know we have a real crunch on that, so... But I would like to hear more about this, in more details, in the financials, but I appreciate you answering the questions.
And Councilman, I'll add, I appreciate that. Thank you, and I... The one thing that I don't want to lose sight of as well is, we... This is going to prepare us, whether we... We're going down this road because we think it's the most feasible operation right now to do, and we believe that it can generate a great deal more revenue to us. But all of this is preparing us for what could be a new RFP. So there is not... There won't be any time lost in, you know, preparing ourselves. That's why I want to be clear. There is no risk to us in doing this. We will be prepared to do a new RFP, and we'll continue to keep the Council, you know, abreast of what the revenue numbers are, what, you know, on a monthly basis if we have to. And it will be easy to make a decision moving forward, but nothing is being lost. There was a lot that we learned in that RFP process. It was not a complete loss of...
Let me move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and that's one of the reasons why he was given additional time, because he is the chair. Let's move to Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, it's almost laughable to think that this department isn't trying to do the best by the citizens of the city of Los Angeles. So I just have to point out a couple of things here. You know, it was cited that the Los Angeles Times has an opinion on whether this department or this city is capable of running the Greek amphitheater. It's the same newspaper that said that we shouldn't be intervening in a process that picked one group over another. So I think it's really important to either... Well, and it also said that it was our prerogative that if we were going to change our opinion, then we should be transparent and as fair as possible. And presumably, what it was that we did not like, at least what I heard from this chair, is that we wanted increased community relations. So if the alternative isn't going to be the group that was picked by a process, if it's not going to be the city of Los Angeles, then it leaves it to be the folks that, Mr. Coretts, you wanted to see there in the first place. So I think that if we come back to what's really important here, which is the impact to the community, making sure that we're mitigating everything that we need to that is a concern of theirs, what better organization can do that than the Department of Recreation and Parks, who is held to account by the City Council of Los Angeles? It gives us the running room to design an RFP, divorce ourselves from all of the people that are currently in this process, so that we can start dealing with some of the emotion of change, because that's ultimately what this is about. It's about emotion from a community that doesn't want to see change, and I admire that, because they've got a good relationship. But at the end of it all, is it going to be a good relationship for the city of Los Angeles? I think that's the question that's begged. So the only way to do that is to create a little bit of time between us and whoever is out there, and if the alternative is going to be the Department of Wreckin' Parks, that has to be held to account by the city of Los Angeles, then so be it. Let's figure out how to do that. Or let's go ahead and soul-source this, because ultimately, that's where we're moving in one direction. If you don't like who was chosen, you don't like the city of Los Angeles, then you must like the last person standing. And to me, that seems just unfair and laughable if it weren't for the fact that there's so much at stake for the residents and for the folks who are doing a fine job by the city of Los Angeles. So I'd like to hear, what's before us? What is it that we have to vote on today, or is this just a report back?
Councilman, this is just a report back, and certainly the Council could take decisions upon that report, but right now, there is... Based on my report, there is no actions before this.
Very good. And so the Commission has adopted a plan for how it is that the Department of Recreation and Parks would move forward with the open venue plan?
That's correct.
Very good. And at what point will that come to the full City Council for either support or denial?
This is... This will likely be the... Today is likely the venue for which that would happen. There is no... And the reason, I'll clarify why that is, there isn't any contracts that we're preparing that are going to be long-term contracts, and it's very intentional. I don't want to lock us into any position on it, you know. So like, for example, for the food and beverage, we would need a contract for that, but it's only going to be a one-year contract. So we will put a couple of one-year renewable options in there at our sole discretion, at the city's sole discretion, but there isn't anything in that process that we require because we're not going by charter, we're not going over the timelines for the contract.
So what I'm getting at is, if we wanted to intervene, we'd have to assert jurisdiction over the decision that the Commission has made?
That's correct.
like the last person standing. And to me, that seems just unfair and laughable if it weren't for the fact that there's so much at stake for the residents and for the folks who are doing a fine job by the City of Los Angeles. So I'd like to hear, what's before us? What is it that we have to vote on today, or is this just a report back?
Councilman, this is just a report back, and certainly the council could take decisions upon that report, but right now, there is, based on my report, there is no actions before that.
Very good. And so the commission has adopted a plan for how it is that the Department of Recreation and Parks would move forward with the open venue plan?
That's correct.
Very good. And at what point will that come to the full city council for either support or denial?
This is, this will likely be, today is likely the venue for which that would happen. There is no, and the reason, I'll clarify why that is, there isn't any contracts that we're preparing that are going to be long-term contracts, and it's very intentional. I don't want to lock us into any position on it, you know, so like, for example, for the food and beverage, we would need a contract for that, but it's only going to be a one-year contract. So we will put a couple of one-year renewable options in there, at our sole discretion, at the city's sole discretion, but there isn't anything in that process that we require because we're not going by charter, we're not going over the timelines for the contract.
So what I'm getting at is, if we wanted to intervene, we'd have to assert jurisdiction over the decision that the commission has made?
That's correct.
And at that point, all that we could do is say yes to, no to the decision that they've made, and then you'd all have to scramble and figure out what else to do?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, and just to make it clear, this is an update, this is a briefing, there'll be no action items when this conversation is over. With that said, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. And first, again, thank you to Rec and Parks for all the wonderful work you do. It was devastating what we did through the last recession and all the cuts we made to our parks, but yet we kept striving and provided that public service that provides so many opportunities for our youngsters and families in the city. On this, I think it's great that we're airing out what decision was made. There was a lot of questions, not only by the council, but also the public, in terms of the direction that the Greek Theater is headed in. And one of the things that I've heard asked often, and I'm just going to repeat it to see what your response would be, so that the public can hear it, is it should Rec and Parks be in the business of promoting concerts and operating a concert venue? And I'm just asking that because that is a question I often heard out there when the new direction was announced, and so I just wanted to hear your response, so you could announce it publicly.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. First of all, we will not be in the promoter's business, we will not be promoting concerts. This will be done by people like AEG, Live Nation, hopefully the Needalander's promoters who do this. The venue will be made available to them to use, and they will pay a rent to use the venue. That's what the open venue model is, there is no exclusive operator. Rec and Parks won't be involved in those decisions about what shows they put on. I mean, we do have a say in the levels of security and levels of, you know, things that they need to put on to protect the community, and we will certainly do that, but we'll do that through our management company that we're going to bring on to oversee the venue. But Rec and Parks will have, other than, I mean, we own the venue, so it's, yes, it's not our core business, but it is, it is an iconic venue, and it does, it is our responsibility. But we will not be promoting, meeting with talent, making phone calls to talent, it's just not...
And there are professional management companies out there that are in this type of business, or is it the people who responded to RFP, who are the promoters, who are, can be also the business of managing the Greek Theater?
It's both. They both, they both do that. The only difference would be in the contract that we plan to put out is that we will not permit, as part of that contract, whoever is managing, that they will not be permitted to promote. So they won't be, otherwise, it gets into more of an exclusive operation again, and that's not what we want. So they would be our agent, they would act as the department's agent, the city's agent to run the theater, the Greek theater, but they would not be promoting concerts.
Okay. My final question is this, any revenues that are now received under this new model, do they go back into the operation of the Greek Theater, or do they go to your general fund or any other revenue stream in Rec and Parks? Where does the revenue go, the profits?
It should stay within the department.
Within the department, but not necessarily within the Greek Theater?
No, we will, we will basically take all costs associated with running the venue, paying the, you know, all those fees, there are costs, so those would come out of the revenues, the gross revenues. So there would not be any impact to our current budget, because we will take them out of the revenues generated by the theater. We do intend, at least putting, even if this is only for a short time, we do intend putting aside some money for capital from the net revenues that we receive. That's part of the plan, regardless of how long we do it, we need to put money away, but that, but the remaining revenues will go back to the department and where we use them across the city. And if we're, you know, one of the things that I'm striving to do in this department is not to do, raise fees and do it on the backs of childrens and family, children and families who, especially in lower-income areas, who the programs need to be free. We lost all those subsidies through 10 years of cuts. We need to start, and we need to start looking at, and I'm using the Greek Theater as an example, where we can start to take more of that revenue and put it back into all the communities of Los Angeles.
But for the immediate time, any of the new revenues, you're going to put back into capital in Greek Theater? That might take a while, so it won't be several years, or unless you do another RFP, whatever direction you go, but it won't be several years until we actually, some additional revenues go back into, let's say, the general fund of Rec and Parks?
Yeah, that's, well, there's, we wouldn't take all of the net revenue from, what we're envisioning is, for example, if we generate $3 million at 50 shows next year, we would take a million of that three and put it aside for capital. So it'll range from, our plan is to take $1 to $1.5 million annually and set it aside for capital into an account for the Greek Theater. The remaining balance goes into the entire operation of the department.
And last, you know, my kids just started baseball at our local park, and in talking to a number of families on the east side, it's just incredible, the number of families who don't participate, because they can't afford those fees. And we've made a number of cuts through subsidies for low-income families, and we all know the positives of having our young kids being able to participate in local sports at the local park, and if we could go in a direction to allow these young kids have that opportunity again, and I was trying to get at that, to see if we, any revenues from this can go to support issues like that that Rec and Parks faces. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank the Department and Commission for coming before us today. I really appreciate the entrepreneurial spirit that's evidenced in your, in the proposal. I wasn't clear, though, I think you did make some explanation of why you don't want, you wouldn't do a one-year extension or a six-month extension with the current contract, if you could hit that again. And then also, give us an idea of what other major city venues are doing, this open venue concept, what other cities has it been successfully deployed in, and how, you know, and what kind of success they had?
So, just to reiterate, your first question, Councilmember, was on the contract extension, correct? So the response I had given was that the existing contract has already been extended several times with no change of financial terms. So there's been several years where I believe we've lost, left a substantial amount of money on the table. We did, however, receive, to be fair to that, we did receive two proposals unsolicited, one from Needalander and then one from Live Nation. The Needalander proposal was for a year extension, they would, I think it was for $3.5 million in revenue back to the city. Live Nation had previously, prior to that, had given an unsolicited proposal, which was for $5 million. So we don't believe it's in our best interest to entertain these proposals, because first and foremost, any extension, you know, has to be supported by some, by a legal justification. We can't just throw money, numbers at things and hope that the city takes it. There should be a competitive process. This is not representative of a competitive process. So we believe that doing so without a competitive process would not yield the best value back to the department. And also, I would just say that doing an extension this late, you know, late in the game is definitely going to be fraught with issues and hurdles, and conceivably, we'll end up right back where we started, if we chose to go that path. We think the open venue fixes that, because it creates a fair, level playing field for all of the promoters to be able to participate at the Greek Theater.
What about the success of this model and other venues?
Oh, I mean, one of the, probably the most notable one is the City of Denver, which is, you know, Red Rocks is one of the, it's probably the premier open venue in the nation. It is a much larger venue, it's a 10, I think it's 10,000 seats, and it also is virtually in the middle of nowhere, so it's not comparable in the form of, it's not within a community like we are, you know, in Los Angeles. Well, I mean, there's other, there's many other, like companies like, yeah, there are other examples across the nation, you know, I think, I think some of them are debatable about how much of an open venue they are, like Wolf Trap, we believe, is as close to an open venue, I think that's in Virginia, correct? And, you know, there's, but there's many other smaller venues and any other venues that are operated. The companies that we've been talking, that are interested in managing the Greek, operate hundreds of these types of facilities at a fee. So there's plenty of them across the nation.
Thank you. Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. This sounds, sounds all Greek to me. First and foremost, Mike, let me just say, you know how I feel about you as a general manager, and I'll say it publicly, I think you're one of the best general managers we have, and it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you for many years, far before you were the GM and even now, and a lot of projects that we've been working on and collaborating on. Your communication skills are phenomenal, but what you care most about are the people and the residents of L.A., and you've proven that time and time again. And so I want to compliment you on that. This has not been a political issue, although everybody says it's been publicized, it's been publicized that's been a political issue, and it's been politicized. The fact is, from my perspective, this has been a process issue. And what I think the process, colleagues, went wrong in the beginning, was really a flaw, and it's an inconsistent flaw in process we have in the City of L.A. And until we look at that and analyze it and have the conversation, and the flaw is this, an RFP went out on the street. There were bidders that came back, and the grading system and what we asked them to come back with was based on what the RFP went out on. That RFP was not done in collaboration or in concert with this body. The commission did it, and I think the commission did a phenomenal job. The commission does, and this commission has done a great, great job. And I've worked with many of you, and Sylvia, you're fantastic to work with, and I appreciate all your support as well. But the issue was that the process doesn't either mandate or require a collaborative effort with the community and/or with this body on all RFPs from all of our various commissions. And oftentimes, the commission and/or the department will put out an RFP based on what they think those needs are, and we find out later that a council member or the community or this body or the mayor, whoever it might be, says, well, wait a minute, you graded it on X, Y, and Z, but we are, other issues or things we think should have carried more weight. And that might be the case, and sometimes, once in a while, we'll get an RFP. We've done it many times through public safety, and I weigh in on it immediately as the chair, that I'd see an RFP going out, try to bring it in and say, let's bring the RFP to committee prior to it going out for requests for proposals to come back, and we've done that on various things as well. But there's an inconsistency. And so that inconsistency, one can call it politicizing it, or the fact that some folks have said, well, lobbyists and lawyers and others have come out, or the community, saying we care about more issues than others. That needs to be done at the beginning of the process, and not sit and point fingers to everybody saying it wasn't done. I do think there was an effort, though, that's lost, unfortunately, because of what happened with a $30 to $40 million capital improvement that we're going to lose out on. I also think we're going to also lose out on a lot of deferred maintenance issues, and the place is tired, and it needs some work. And so that concerns me. I don't think it's in our best interest, quite frankly, to run this facility, even with what has been laid out. I don't know that we have a lot of other options right now, but I certainly don't think it's in our best interest, particularly given the nature of all the other things we've got to do in our core functions in the City of Los Angeles. And so without going into that detail, what I'd like to hear back is two things. One, is what's the time certainty that we're going to look at in actually developing a new RFP, number one? And number two, I'd like to see a better coordinated effort with this commission, who does a phenomenal job, who works tirelessly, not only on that, but working with the foundation as well, to raise money outside of taxpayer dollars for improvements at many of our parks and our facilities, and has really done a terrific job of that and raising the bar. What are we going to do here specifically in a guaranteed timeframe, and perhaps a new process moving forward to make sure that before a new RFP goes out, we have a discussion that goes back to this commission, is blessed by this body, and goes out to ensure we capture and rate the proposals that come back before the analysis is done? That's in our budget, we're going to get that fixed, too.
Or maybe, maybe my time is up. The, so the time certainty is that, the idea is that we've scheduled a check-in on this issue towards the fall of 2016, which would leave us time. We need to leave time, no matter what we do, for the new RFP process. So during that time, Councilmember, between probably, I'll say July of this year and July of the following year, all of everything that we're doing now is helping us with positioning ourselves for an RFP, for a new RFP, for all the data that we need for RFPs. There will be plenty of time, if we decide to go that route, for the council to have a say in that process, being that we're looking at, probably as a minimum, operating it for the 2016-17 season. So I can guarantee, on a new RFP, that the council would have the opportunity to see that.
And so what's the timeframe? What would we be looking at and actually putting out, knowing all the steps that have to be done?
Well, traditionally...
Not traditionally, but here and now, this is not traditional.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think we're way ahead of the game on this one, but a reasonable assumption would be 12 months.
12 months, before a new RFP is actually issued out there, and we can look at...
The timing that's, you know, getting through, getting through the RFP is one.
Right.
Getting through the scoring is another, and then there's the processes of that contract being approved by, through the, you know, through committee, through the council, and then, you know, leading up to that is obviously, you know, finalizing the details of the agreement with whoever that is. It's typically about an 18-month process.
Is it fair to ask for, at least at this point, from the department and the commission, to ask that before a new RFP does go out, that that's vetted with this body as well?
If that's what the request is, you have my commitment, that if a new RFP goes out, it would be vetted with this body, absolutely.
Prior to.
Prior to.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bonnet.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mainly wanted to rise briefly, just to say something to and about Mr. Shul. Mike, I want to thank you for your hard work on this. I want to echo what Mr. Englander said, I think you are among our best general managers, and I think your staff has worked incredibly, incredibly hard on this issue and your commission as well, and I wanted to thank you for that. As a number of my colleagues have pointed out, this is not a perfect solution before us. It's not ideal. I don't think anybody's eager to have the department in this position, but honestly, I don't think we gave you any other choice. When the council took its action last month, we left the department with very few options, and I think this is the best you could come up with, with the tools and the timing that this body gave you. And if we shut door number A and door number B, I'm certainly, or letter A and letter B, I'm certainly not going to fault you for taking door C. So I thank you for that. I personally really don't want to see a ton of RFPs coming to us for review, I think that's what we have departments for. And I think we should only intervene when it's clear the department did something wrong, and I don't think that your department did at all. I think one thing we might need to fix is giving the departments better resources to go faster in getting RFPs out on the street. We often face situations where we complain when an RFP gets to us that, oh, this is dated, it's been so long. Well, that's going to continue to happen, as long as the departments don't have the resources to process the RFPs. And we can't keep saying as a body that we're not happy with an RFP because it's dated if we have a structure where dated RFPs are built in. We can't keep having a system where folks go through a process with due diligence and respond to an RFP and go through the process, and then at the last minute, us throwing it out. It isn't fair to anybody involved, it's not fair to the bidders, and it's not fair, certainly to the departments and to our volunteer commissions that do so much work. So, again, not a perfect solution, we didn't give you many options, so thanks for the work you're doing, all of you.
Mr. Labarche.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was concerned with Mr. Coretts in this, and I scratched my head, and I scratched my head, because I'm fourth, he's fifth, but I realized P-22 got to him. The other day, P-22 was just above the Greek Theater on Glendower, and he had a nice place to live, and he liked the quiet, he didn't want to see the theater open. All right, Paul, I got you to laugh. Anyway, one person laughed, everybody should laugh. But, and this thing here, right now, Michael, it's so important that you do the right thing. You've got the weight of the world on you on this. Your department experienced a fire, it's lost your headquarters, you're in the move. Things were run in a very fine way, why, a tremendous amount of people came from the district that is surrounding the theater to support that operator that's existing. That was a very big, big turnout of people. I know in that last several years, and I think Mr. Englander spoke about, up... people. I know in that last several years, and I think Mr. Englander spoke about upgrading the theater, they did a tremendous thing when they restored it, got away the road, moved up the new ticket center up the street on Vermont Canyon. You've got a big load coming at you. The only thing I want is I want the city administrative officer, Mr. Santana and his group, to vet this, and I want it by August 1st. I'm not going to be here after the 30th, but for the good of the department and the people, that is this something that you can do. Right now, comparable, the Hollywood Bowl, owned by the Parks and Recreation of the County, has an operating agreement with the Los Angeles Philharmonic. They operate it. Universal Open Air Theater, gone. Irvine, I think, is gone. I'd never like to see the Greek Theater gone. We can't trip. We can't fall. We've got to do the right thing. And you've got to have a phone, because the people in the community have worked closely, and the current operator has been tremendous at handling community problems that are there, because it's unique to a canyon and the history that is there. So all that being said, the big thing I ask members, and I don't know if I have to make a, and there's no action, you said, but I want to make some direction or commitment or whatever, if I need to do a motion, to say that the CIO report back by the 1st of August. There will be a new representative in this seat, and this is a big issue. And I think the commission, and I'm glad I 245 this, because I think it was important to really look at all these issues that are here. And I'm okay with Mr. Coretts. He lets me go to Pink's anytime I want. That's in his district. This is okay. Again, no laughter, so everybody's too serious here. So anyway, that being said, I think it's real key so that. Now, I want to ask the clerk, because I do want the CIO to look at this. I cannot leave my community unguarded by not having another eye look over your shoulder on this issue. And we've talked about this. Is that correct? You're okay with the CIO looking at this and reporting back to council?
The CIO looks at pretty much all that we do.
I got it, but on this one, this is a big step, ladies and gentlemen. This is a big step. You had a fire. You've been displaced. You have staff cuts. You have a lot of people who've called you.
Mr. Labange, I can come up with a way to accommodate your request, so.
Okay, but I just want to make sure it's stated so that we have it in the record.
Thank you.
All right.
They will be directed.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And Mike, I want to say thank you for really taking the time to come back with a alternative. It's been so easy to have collapsed after the last one and just guessed that everybody was looking for Live Nation, but I think the fact that you stayed on course gives us other options without losing anything. And the fact that you're committed to getting someone that's onboard that actually runs facilities, that's not going to be in the process of also booking events, is a good separation so that we do not have the conflict of interest. I think it's an issue in which the staff certainly wants to see this venue be successful, but you also have the added responsibility of what the finances for the city. And I think one of the things that came out in the earlier discussion that kind of piqued my interest was that, yes, there was a great deal of community outreach as it relates to concerns, but also I don't think there was a real discussion of how much that community's concerns have diminished not only the viability of the location, but the type of events and the number of events that may eventually cause less funds coming to the city. So I think we have to balance that as to whether it's a revenue producer for the city and whether, in the sense that we certainly take in the consideration the sensitivity of noise and traffic, but it shouldn't be the thing that says we run less events because of a concern about noise. We mitigate that noise as we've done throughout the city. And I think it's important that we not lose sight of the fact that, as we talk today about dealing with infrastructure and talking about dealing with upgrades and increase in the facility, we can't lose sight over the last 10 years that we lost a great deal of money. If you go back 10 years ago, the House of Blues, their proposal was $23 million, and the Needlelanders was 18. So we ended up trying to get them to merge, which did not work out. And then later, if I'm not mistaken, Needleander produced 13 as opposed to 18. And so had we moved forward on the original proposal of House of Blues, we could have had somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million more than what we ended up with. And I think that's where we have to look at things differently, just as we looked at them differently at the convention center, and where we made decisions that allowed business to decide on how things should run. For years, we didn't make money on the parking lot because we had this artificial figure that said you can't have a fee more than $15 on the parking lot. Yet, when nothing was going on and everybody else was selling parking for $5, $7, we had 15, and so the lot was empty. Then when a major event went on, people were selling parking for $40 and $50, and we were selling it for 15. So I think we have to have business interests look at business issues as opposed to some of the bureaucratic things that have limited us in the past. So I want to thank you for sticking with your guns, being objective, and bringing us a viable, responsive issue for us to look at for the future of the Greek.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Coretts to close, and then I've got the public I want to bring in.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to echo Mr. Englander's comments about the department, and I hope I made it clear enough that I think this is one of the most effective departments with top management staff and an incredible general manager. So this has made this even more painful for me, because this was just a move that had me scratching my head, and I had to, I was hoping somebody else would bring this forward, but I had to do it. Now, what really I think is the essence of the problem is something I don't think you saw at the time, but if you had had the ability to say, and I don't think you could have, "You know, we've asked you to come back and redo this RFP," and had you said at the time, "We can't do that. The other choice is the city running it." I think we thought it was a choice between Live Nation and AEG and Needleander. If the choice was between Live Nation and the city, and we knew it at the time, certainly I would have voted for the Live Nation proposal. The problem was, and I think a number of us made it clear, I probably made it the clearest, and by the way, I probably should point out that I don't appreciate the accusations and innuendo from Mr. Fuentes, that just because I disagreed with him on this, that I had to have a target result in mind. I made every effort to make clear in my comments during the other hearing that we thought there were flaws in the waiting. And the fact that buying the same equipment somebody else is going to rent and getting extra weight for that, putting an expensive roof that was bizarrely designed on the Greek and giving an extra weight from that one, I certainly thought, and many others, that that roof would never get built, not including enough community input, that those things could be corrected for. Now, I didn't have an opinion on who would win the RFP that comes back, because I think it's actually at that point a very even call, once I think some of those flaws are corrected. And I don't really care which one it is. You have the two state-of-the-art proposals you could ever have in this city. I just don't want us to be the third choice. I didn't see this coming when we had that prior discussion. I wish I had, because I don't think it really matters which of the two choices there are. It's going to be a well-run Greek Theater. Those are two great potential operators. I just don't want to see us go down this road and try to be competition. I don't mind if we do this temporarily, although I think it's a poorer idea than just extending the contract and doing the RFP. I don't want us to fall in love with this and view ourselves as a good alternative. This strikes me as a bad business model. I do, whichever way we go, I want us to come back, do an RFP, and select one of the world-class companies that can do this, and I don't think you'll ever convince me that that is us. Live Nation, AEG, Needleander, either one will be fine. Us, I'm still scratching my head, trying to figure out how we would take that as an alternative. So I know we're going to move forward with this. Please just do it temporarily. Please move forward with an RFP and pick one great company or another.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. We're going to now do a public comment on this item. Madam Clerk, set the clock at 15 minutes. We'll do one minute per speaker. Shannon Kalan, Kalan J. Handel, Rena Wasserman, please come forward, followed by, I guess it's Marion Dodge.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, everyone. My name is Shannon Kalan, and I just wanted to say that you, the city council, had instructed RAP to go back and rebid the RFP process to include more community input. There was minimal community input. We find ourselves now with an option that was never on the table, to have the city run the Greek Theater. I want to talk about what would be lost if the city runs the Greek. The city received two beautiful proposals that had millions of dollars and needed capital improvement. That would have been done immediately to the venue. Both RFPs had visionary sustainability programs, cultural and community programming, and would guarantee the city more rent than ever before. We have a chance to do this right. Please don't rush this. Extend the current operator's contract and score RAP's proposal against a new RFP. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Handel, followed by Ms. Wasserman, followed by Ms. Dodge. Yes, Mr. Handel.
Yes, good morning or good afternoon, whatever it is. My name is Jay Handel. I'm speaking as the Chair of the Budget Advocates. I want to thank Councilmember Labange for asking the CIO for a report back at something we requested a couple of weeks ago. We think it's important for transparency, because we really just don't see the numbers here. Let's look at a different path for a second. We're all talking about a road we're going down. How about, since we've got two unsolicited bids to up to $5 million at this point, and we have a city agency that says they can't hit that number based on the GM's last number of 4.8, how about a sealed bid from both of the finalists to come back, one shot, one year, and at the same time eliminate all these RFPs for consultants, contractors, food vendors, and let them concentrate on a non-flawed RFP with a grading system that everybody can agree on. We get the money upfront. We don't have the hassles, and we move forward with a good vendor. Thank you.
Thank you. So do I have Rena Wasserman, followed by Marion Dodge, followed by, I believe it's John or Joni Dahlberg? Please come forward. Yes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Needleander concerts in the city of Los Angeles have been an exemplary model of a public-private partnership for many decades. Under Needleander's stewardship, the Greek has enjoyed excellence in operation verified by third parties, patrons, the community, and the music industry. Our community partnerships are citywide and are outstanding. Our financial guarantees have continually provided the city with risk-free revenue streams and stability. $27 million in gross revenues last year, $2 million to the department. Do you think artists perform for free? Do you think that Needleander took $25 million and left the city too? That is not the truth. That is not correct. Apparently now, an experiment needs to be conducted. We did not ask for extensions. We were asked by the department to extend while they took time preparing an RFP. As a good partner, we said yes. We worked with the department, and we would, there would be no cultural events in this new model, as they do not make money. Will the department be presenting these events? We have offered to amend and extend. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, Ms. Dodge, I think of Mr. Dahlberg, and a Barbara Ferris. Yes.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Marion Dodge. I'm a neighbor of the Greek Theater. The Department of Recreation and Parks' task is to run the city park system, which it does very well in spite of drastically recut budgets. They have enough of a task without the additional burden of running an iconic concert venue like the Greek Theater. Even managing a managing company requires a lot of time and effort by RAP. Note the new staff that is required for the project. The Greek Theater Advisory Committee has worked closely with the Needleander staff for the last 10 years and understands the operation of the Greek Theater very well. Now, they're very concerned that RAP lacks the financial commitment and staffing, industry expertise required to successfully operate the Greek Theater. You should listen to their recommendation for extending the contract to Needleander. After all, GTAC exists to advise. There's no time for rash impulsive decisions.
Thank you. Thank you. So do I have a Mr. Dahlberg? Because if I call you, please come forward. You're going to lose time on this. Ms. Ferris, please come forward. I have another Shannon, or, yeah, okay, and then a Judith Kiefer. Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity today, and I'm glad that you put this on the agenda to listen. We have been speaking at these meetings for a long time, and we would like to, on behalf of the Los Feliz Improvement Association, I would also like to let you know that we oppose this. We've sent a letter to you explaining why. We oppose the self-operation, and we also oppose the carrot-and-stick approach, that we'll talk to the community tomorrow. The next go-around, we'll talk to the community. Don't worry. And it's always about this one. We support the two-year extension and terms, and we also want to let you know what we do want. We want a fair assessment of the alternative, which has been, is not on the table, which is an extension, and the least risk to the city, the best guarantee of revenue, and the least disruption to the surrounding community. That's what we really want. And thank you, Tom, for the CIO request, and we hope to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could have Shannon, Judith Kiefer, and is it Melissa Carbone? Yes, go right ahead. Identify yourself.
Thank you. I'm Shannon. I'm a neighbor. And it's my experience that the best solution is usually the most elegant solution, and the most elegant solution is usually the simplest solution. And the simplest solution here today is to extend the Needleander contract, redo the RFP process, make it a more thorough process, a more complete process. Again, and I'd like to add my confusion and frustration, when we have the best, when Los Angeles has the best, why would they choose anything less than that? They have, you know, and then finally, I'd like to say, with 18 months given to professionals, why would we give RAP just a few months to figure this out? Let's take the time. Let's do it right. Let's go with the right solution, give it an extension for the RFP, and please talk to the community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I have Ms. Kiefer, Carbone, and it looks like a Brett Gallagher, followed by Cindy Starett. Yes.
Good morning, good afternoon, President Wesson and members of the council. My name's Judith Kiefer. I'm the Executive Director of the Los Angeles Parks Foundation. Our singular objective is to raise private dollars to support all of the city's 400 parks. The L.A. Parks Foundation is in a very unique position to attest to the department's commitment to the public interest and its ability to engage in successful public-private partnerships. The L.A. Parks Foundation executes grant agreements with major foundations and corporations committing to complete significant and much-needed capital improvements at our parks with private funds. We make those assurances because we work directly with the department's environmental experts, civil engineers, landscape architects, and all the men and women in the department to successfully complete these public-private partnership projects. As you all know, raising funds in support of the municipality is challenging. L.A. Parks Foundation is not alone. The Trust for Public Lands, the Nature Conservancy, L.A. Neighborhood Land Trust, and many others regularly support public-private partnerships.
Thank you. So please come up, and then if I could ask a, looks like a Philip Green, maybe, or Green, to get in line after Cindy. Identify yourself.
Good afternoon, President, and members of the council. My name's Melissa Carbone. I'm the CEO of 1031 Productions, also homeowner of the 90027 zip code, literally right down the street from the Greek. I get, being part of the community, I also get the need for survival and to progress. And, you know, this is, this is a new and innovative way of running this venue, but this is, you know, this creates discomfort. This creates fear in a lot of people, but that doesn't mean you don't do it. There's a quote that says, "Everything that fails to evolve ceases to exist." Not some things, everything. Not some things, everything. So, to me, the private sector has been making tons of revenues, tons of profits off of the venue live industry for over a century. There's no reason why the department can't do the same. I'm in huge support of this being an open venue. Additionally, I think the quality of shows will become better, being able to work with everybody. Better shows means more tickets, which means more revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello there.
Sir, I'll pass my time. Thank you.
Okay. Please.
Mr. President, Cindy Sterrett from Latham &amp; Watkins, and we're here in support of the staff report. I also raised money for the parks. Our parks do a great job. They have a tremendous record of public-private partnerships, and the department's recommendation that this is in the best interest of the city has been substantiated by all the evidence in the record and all the comments they made today. So we very much support the staff report. Thank you.
Okay. Now, I haven't called your names. You shouldn't be in the center aisle until your name is called. So do I have a Philip? Is there a Philip? Did you speak? The, so Brett? I have a Catherine, maybe? Is it a Louise? Followed by a Dora Herrera? Please, I didn't.
My name's Catherine Louise. Thank you for, very much, for hearing us out today. To echo what Tom Labange said, there are concerns about this. It's a Griffith Park is the park that surrounds the Greek, so it's really important that whatever's done to the Greek takes Griffith Park into consideration. And we need to make sure that we're considering every opportunity for the RFP to go forward and choose the right person to manage the Greek. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there a Nyla? Nyla Arcellanian? And I know I probably butchered that. Please make yourself, come this way. And is it Ms. Herrera? You're up.
Good morning, good afternoon. Mr. Coretz says he doesn't care who gets the job. Mr. Fuentes says the public just doesn't want change. As part of the public, I care. And if the current operator is the best venue for 10 years, why would I want another operator whose name, when mentioned during the RFP, brought shouts of, "Oh, God, no, not them"? We need to think of the whole pie and not just the promised revenue. Thank you.
Okay, please come forward and state your name.
My name is Nyla Arcellanian. I come before, pardon me.
No, I said I was close. Here, starter time over again.
Thank you. My name is Nyla Arcellanian. I've come before you in the past as editor of Discover Hollywood Magazine or president of the Hollywood Arts Council, but today I come before you as vice president of Arcellanian and Associates, the entertainment and marketing firm that has allowed me to be able to devote a lot of time, my time, to communities, to the community. We produce concerts and have for the past 30 years. Actually, our first concert was produced at the Greek Theater. We know the concert is as good as the promoters', and what I have heard today strikes fear in my heart. As I, also a resident of Los Feliz and member of the Board of the Los Feliz Improvement Association, I heard chaos. We've seen things in our Hollywood community where a number of our clubs are all operated by different promoters from time to time, and the result is not good for our community. I encourage you to extend the contract for the Nederlanders for two years and work out this RFP process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. If I could get Donna Pierman?
Sorry. Anyway, this is amazing because Mr. Paul Coretz might be right, and good for you, Mr. Coretz, for your standing up for it. Anyway, let private developers do more programs, and let's keep it privately owned. This is a poor idea. It's a scheme to eventually sell off our Greek Theater and undermine the taxpayers. I believe this private-public partnership will ruin the Greek Theater. I don't believe they will have affordable events, and I don't believe they won't raise the fees for children and families because you'll have to pay, raise the rents, so that you can pay the employees. This is, I know, I really love the Greek Theater, and I want to keep the Greek Theater aware how it is. I want to keep it privately owned because, you know, they want to bring in, most people at the more affordable cost, but the city will only just raise the prices because all they care about is revenue. So this is a poor idea. Don't do it. Do RFP or whatever they say.
Okay, thank you. So that, the hearing, the 15 minutes are up. The other names will be entered into the record. Mr. Coretz. Please sit down. I indicated it would be a 15-minute hearing, and it was. So sit down.
So I think we've, we've heard-
Mr. Coretz.
In my view, two better ideas than having the city operate this. One would be have an extension with the current operators at their higher offered amount of revenue. Another would be allowing a sealed bid between the two folks that we acknowledge, either of whom could do a great job running this. Is there a reason why either or both could not be considered, and why they wouldn't be better choices than having the city run it?
Councilman, I don't know that I can respond on the legality of a sealed bid. The only thing I would say is that I still remain steadfast in that I don't believe rushing into trying to do some, what amounts to not a very competitive process, because I'd be afraid of what would come in those sealed bids and the conditions that would come along with them, and there'd still be a great deal of controversy associated with that, and we'd probably likely be no further ahead. I just, based on the history of this, that's what I would expect to happen.
And what would prevent us from giving an extension to the current operator at a higher revenue level for a one-year period of time and then coming back with the RFP as we had originally asked?
Well, as a council member, as I tried to explain, again, my recommendation is that it's not in our best interest to do so. And, again, having two unsolicited proposals puts us in a not-so-normal process for which it's not competitive. And we, I am bound to make sure that the process is competitive, and I don't think that puts us in a process we've lost. There's been a great deal of time in extensions that's been already given on this contract, and I believe that extending it just probably puts us right back, probably right back at the table next year, having the very same discussion we're having this year about, about the contract. I just don't think it's in our best interest to do so.
Now, why would we be there? Because I, that sounds like an assumption that we continue to have problematic RFPs and all the same issues, when you know what the issues are, you come back with a different RFP. I think at that point, we just resolve it. So, I don't understand why we'd be back in the same place. We'd be back in the same place with a better RFP, a better, more collaborative process, and hopefully a winning bidder that we all could, could agree on, because the process has turned out to be what we had all hoped.
I'm just basing it on, I mean, you're right, there are assumptions, but I mean, just basing it on kind of the history of the venue and the process of which we've gone through. That leads me to want to make that conclusion.
So, if one took that as an assumption, we would assume the only way we can run it in the future is by having the city run it indefinitely.
Well, you didn't-
Because at some point, we're going to come back otherwise with an RFP, and we will have to make a choice based on the recommendations of that RFP.
Well, the, well, back to the extension, I mean, the, we'd have to make, the city attorney would have to make, there would have to be some supportive legal justification to do that and put us in a situation where there's, I believe, the way I understand it, is that we would need to be in some sort of emergency situation extending it, and there is no other viable options. And I don't, I can't say that there's no viable option because I've just presented the City Council with one. So, I, I don't believe I can make that recommendation just simply on the fact that I've made a presentation on of another viable option legally.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Labange to close on this item?
So, just to follow up, I'm going to do a letter. You'll all get a copy of it, asking the city administrative officers by August 1st to do an analysis and give update. For whoever replaces me, has to be keen on the issue, because this is right, as if you could imagine, in a canyon, right in a neighborhood, right in a place. And I, I, one thing that everyone said here is how special a team Commissioner, President Patzouris, your two deputies right there, Vicky Israel, who was one of the first employees I met 30-plus years ago here, Michael, you've got a big task. I love who's operating the Greek, but there's a process now that I think I hear from the members, and you're going to go. Now, I would just say what Mr. Coretz said, if you're in a situation six months from now, you may have to think differently, but you have your task in front of you, and as you move forward, but I truly want the city administrative officers, independent, you said, to look at it, because it is a giant step that you're taking, and I want to make sure no one trips and falls. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange. Madam Clerk, can we not file this item with no objection?
Yes, Mr., Ms. President.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to move to item seven. Mr. O'Fell?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. What's before you, colleagues, is something that came to my committee earlier this month, and that is a recommended change to the business and marketing plan that we reached in agreement over the better course of one full year from late 2013 to 2014, which would enable the, the operator of the zoo to include nighttime ticket sales as part of the agreement that makes the agreement whole, if you will. What we learned is that nighttime ticketed events are increasing in popularity, as evidenced by the, the Zoo Lights over the holiday season. We found out that through $100,000 investment from Councilmember Labange, it resulted in over $1 million in revenue, and those were all on ticket sales. What we didn't do when we adopted the MOU last year was include nighttime ticket sales as part of the agreement, and we, which I feel that we should, and that's what's before you today. I, this, this issue was thoroughly vetted in my committee through working with the city attorney's office, Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association, CLE, CAO, and then my staff worked on this, and I think that this is a step, a huge step in the right direction, and to incorporate these nighttime ticket sales for this MOU. And colleagues, I ask for your eye vote, so we can move forward and increase the revenue through this agreement, which we're already doing. So I ask for your eye vote. Thank you.
With no members on the queue, Madam Clerk, can you open the roll? Close the roll? Todd, I'm sorry. No, there is no comment cards on this item?
Madam President, public hearing has been, was held in committee.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, for clarification. Again, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Next.
Thanks, Tom.
Fourth win for Mr. O'Fell. Thank you. Next item, item 12.
And Madam President, for item 12, a substitute motion has been circulated.
Okay, we're going to take cards for item 12. Wayne?
Yay! Yay! Thank you for the one minute of time that I get at this moment. Well, you went through this so fast, it's almost impossible to know what I get my one minute on. But once again, obfuscation rules the land. This is about affordable housing, sustainable communities, and I don't get my two minutes to speak, so let me just say thanks to Paul Coretz for 245 eyeing the prior contract with Nieda Meyer and the Greek Theater.
He's not talking about this item.
It shows you, when the hard work has to be done, a Jew has to do what's necessary in the end. A Jew is the one with the guts. Thank you, Paul Coretz. Thank you, CD5.
Mr. Byron Barajas?
Yeah, well, Strategic Growth Council's Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities I think, you know, the public and everybody else has to understand that our community seems to be disintegrating. And the problem with that is, whatever programs you may want to implement in order to, what you might think is to support these people, it won't work. You have to take this issue, that the fact that things are getting worse, you won't make it better by throwing projects at the issue. The issue like this, or any other issues that deals with public housing or whatever, is a disintegration of a country, and for that, general public comment.
Next speaker, Juanacala?
Finally. I am totally pissed off. You don't let the people speak much, and you rattle on and on and on.
Mr. Acala, you have to speak to the item, item 12.
Yeah, the item is this, affordable housing. Why don't you make the Greek Theater a homeless shelter, so people can live someplace? Is that agreeable with you? That's affordable housing. Let the people have a place to be, even if it's around the Greek Theater. At least they'll get to listen to the dime concerts that only rich people can afford. How do you like that, Madam Secretary? Huh? Affordable housing for everybody. You, I can't call you any names. There's a lady on the podium. Yeah, very appreciated. To you, city attorney, you look like the Monopoly man.
Next speaker, Mr. Herman?
Disintegrating values for life regarding Council's Affordable Housing and Sustainable Community Program, I find bullshit. Why? Because there is no sustainable housing in Los Angeles or throughout the state of California. We have become the renters' renters' dumping ground by the city of Los Angeles because they created higher and higher impossible rent for all you constituents and stakeholders in the city of Los Angeles. The selfish, abusive speaking of Mr. Labange and O'Fell, willing not to listen, why? We are disintegrating the value for affordable housing in Los Angeles. And yet, Mr. Weezer and Mr. Biggers don't bother to listen because the voice is here to say to you, "There is no affordable housing. Get on the ball and provide affordable housing," because the day I see is the day I believe a word you say, you morons.
There are no additional cards on this item. Madam Clerk, there's two votes.
Yes, Madam President. Yes, first, council should vote on the question of whether to substitute.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes. Now, Madam President, the council should vote on the motion itself.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Just an announcement to members, budget will start at 115 this afternoon. Budget will start at 1:15 this afternoon. We're going to go back to public comment. Felipe Agregano? Is he still here?
Good afternoon, Madam Secretary and honorable council members. I'm here today as a resident of District 14. My name is Felipe Agregano. And I'm here to urge you to join a community, a coalition of businesses, workers, community, and faith members, urging you to pass Clean Environment, Clean Jobs, and Energy Choices. And that is by supporting Assembly Bill 32 in the State Assembly. We urge you with the support. I will have with, for you, some endorsement forms. And I will ask also that you join my own council member, Jose Weezer, who has supported a clean environment and supported a clean jobs in California so that we lead the nation forward. Thank you very much for your time, and you have a good day.
Thank you very much. Byron Barajas?
Now, for anybody who wants to actually expose the treason of the Obama administration, go to larushpak.com. In recent days, there have been actually murders. I think people have heard of the Mediterranean situation where people are literally fleeing Africa but underway to safe housing in some other country. They're actually being drowned it. This policy of mass murder, which is typified by what we see with the drought, by not producing or building ourselves out of a crisis situation, something that Governor Brown seems to hate his father for actually thinking in that way, you know, producing, you know, a future. We, at the Larushpak, we have decided to fully back a policy for a country that is damn worth it. So, like I stated before, join us or die.
Angelica Campos?
Hi, my name is Angelica Campos. I live in Mar Vista. I'm a homeowner. And I'm here for support in the home sharing, which helps to keep my home. And I really thank you for this time, for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry Marin? Henry Marin?
Yes, Wednesday, the members of this council voted to divert $90,000 from the pay of GSD employees doing survey work. And we told 10% of their base pay, just like everybody else. Now, your city attorney told you that was illegal. You got no intent to provide city benefits to these city employees. Yet you keep taking money from these people with no intent to provide them city benefits. Now, what is your problem? Isn't the city attorney supposed to stop y'all from doing illegal stuff and protect the interests of we the people? And collect the interest from unions that are holding our money invested in city buildings and city securities? And that you can lean those buildings until they provide you the money that they owed you in the first place for the benefit of city employees? Now, y'all keep screwing up, niggas the people.
Thank you. Next speaker, Juanacala.
Yes, I'm speaking for the people, and you don't let us speak much. You ramble on and on and on about how much revenue the city can make on a stupid theater. You know, it's not even real. It's entertainment. We need reality. We need affordable housing. We don't need your damn entertainment. The entertainment is for you to make money, not for the people to get the benefits they need. And you're paying all these actors and actresses to act like, "Oh, my God, I've been shot." Oh, oh, oh. What the hell? Why don't you do real things? Like affordable housing for everyone? Read my book, you idiots. The United World of Free and Clear is just a guide. You cannot do the book. We can all write the book together, you asshole.
Next speaker, Mr. Herman.
Madam Speaker, like I wrote on my public comment cards, the voice, as I did at the LAPD commission meeting this morning, very intense stupidity based on that commission to talk about the cameras. Cameras that they only took two days to make a decision on, and hopefully not. But you'll read about it in the news, the same way we read about our Congressman, Mr. Cardena's staff for campaign fraud. It's a shame that you just allow all your campaign donors and promoters and special interests to fund your machine here. But as you see, I bring one wrench to your machine, the symbol of death. Because it's a matter of time when the FBI will discover, upon their discovery, as Mr. Bloomfield stuffs his face with his bread, that you will be investigated, Mr. Bloomfield, all of you, for your treasony to the people of the city of Los Angeles for maliciously taking away from the taxpayers you show interest, none whatsoever.
Next speaker, Wayne? Wayne, you're next.
Again, a major hand to CD5, Paul Corretz, standing up for the taxpayer. He knows the Greek Theater, the big, the big white elephant, you need somebody to put the money into the upgrades. He knows if the city takes over, it's just going to fall to shit. So he's smart enough to know the only way it gets fixed is to give it to a private contractor. See, in the end, you got to give these business decisions to the Jewish people. You have to. They're chosen. It's in the Torah. It's in the First Testament. They're the ones with the business sense. Yeah, Jesus put the soldiers to be the Russians. The businessmen and the bankers are supposed to be the Jews. Everybody else, the majority in 2025, will be Latino. So there you go. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Thank you. Members, I want to encourage everyone to wear their denim tomorrow. Tomorrow's denim day in support of sexual assault victims. Any other announcements, members? Mr. Labonge, did you have an announcement? Seeing none, any, please stand up for adjournments. Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Marshall T. Morgan, M.D., who passed away recently after an illness of several months duration. Dr. Morgan was a media's, immediate past president of the Los Angeles County Medical Association and clinical professor of medicine and chief of emergency medicine at UCLA School of Medicine. He was a thoughtful and devoted leader and a profound influence on the medical field. In 1974, Dr. Morgan was appointed assistant professor of medicine at the UCLA School and acting co-director of the UCLA Emergency Medicine Center. He moved to Santa Monica Hospital in 1976 as associate director and then director of the emergency department. 1982, Dr. Morgan returned to UCLA as medical director of the Emergency Medicine Center. He achieved the rank of clinical professor of medicine in 1991, was appointed chief of the Division of Emergency Medicine. He served as chief of staff of the UCLA Medical Center from 2006 to '08 after holding many other medical staff leadership positions. Dr. Morgan was widely recognized by colleagues and students as an outstanding educator and a caring and compassionate physician, well-known for his calming voice, inviting smile, and gentle touch. Despite working in most of his career in tertiary medical centers, Dr. Morgan always had a bit of the country general practitioner in him, putting patients first and technology second. He's long active in support of organized medicine. He was a member of the California Medical Association, House of Delegates, among many other CMA councils and panels for many years. He survived by his loving wife, Jean Marie, his children, Marshall T. Morgan Jr., Courtney Morgan Green, Cheryl Monique Vander Plasse, Terrence Watson, and John Watson, 10 grandchildren, two great-grandchildren. He was considered to be a courageous leader, a true gentleman, a scholar, a teacher, a humanist, a brilliant clinician, and he'll be much missed.
Mr. Labonge?
Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Jane Meadows Allen, the mom of our very beloved Bill Allen, you know, from all his work, the economic development. Jane Meadows, who was born to missionary parents in China over 95 years ago, lived to be 95, which is pretty special. Was a star on Broadway in the early '40s. She came to Hollywood after World War II. Much loved in her work. And we ask that we adjourn in memory of Jane Meadows Allen. Just recently, I saw Bill and talked about his mom, how special she was. I talked about his dad, late great Steve Allen. And so we think about Bill for the loss of his mom. Three grandchildren and three stepchildren. We remember Jane Meadows Allen. And also, members alike, we enter to adjourn in memory of Al Beneta. Al Beneta, 72 years old, had a tough fight with cancer. Used to live in Silver Lake, but went down to Nashville. He came to Silver Lake by way of New York when he was a roadie for the Rascals, a rock group that Mitchell Farrell will probably remember out of New Jersey, New York, years ago. Much loved, was a primary record producer for John Prine and Steve Goodman for more than 40 years how he managed and booked them around the country. He also was a great lover of old cars, had a great '32 coupe Ford, and he'd drive around the neighborhood. And he called me from Nashville a couple of months ago to lobby me as a friend on the Griffith Park Greek Theater issue because he loved one operator and how they worked. But Al Beneta was a wonderful guy. And he was sorely missed by his wife, Dawn, his son, Michael, his sister Connie, and brother Pete, and many other members of his family. Al Beneta.
Mr. Labonge, any other adjournments? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Don't forget denim day tomorrow.